While the last couple of people are getting signed in, we'll go ahead and start our part of the meeting. As I stated earlier, this is the planning and zoning meeting for the city of Smyrna. Today is June 11th, 2018. It's 6:00 PM and this meeting's called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all your electronic devices be turned off as they have a tendency to interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any of our questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and you've already signed the sign-in sheet at the podium, so I can skip that part. So, as we get through the final slide in, the first item on our agenda is item 2017-357. This is zoning application Z17021. It's rezoning from GC to MU Conditional for the development of 4 acres and land lot 845 and 846. This is 3110 Sports Avenue. The applicant is JLB Realty. I believe Mr. Sudrith is going to give the background.
Let me get sort of reorganized here a little bit. Right. All right, if you could put the slide up on the screen, I would appreciate that. It in the application, this is a request from JLB Realty. It is on property off of Sports Avenue. It'll be heard tonight, and then it is scheduled to be heard by mayor and council on July 16th. What you see on the screen now is the subject parcels. They are outlined in a sort of an aqua-blue line at the end of Sports Avenue, but it also runs up really behind the Burger King, then comes down around the cul-de-sac, swings back up towards Spring Road, and picks up one more lot there. The proposal, again, as indicated on our agenda, has to do with 325 multifamily units, a little over 3,000 square feet of retail space, and almost 7,000 square feet of a live-work space. Now, the existing zoning is GC. What's being proposed is mixed-use conditional. With regards to our future land use map, there is no need for a change. It is already identified as a regional activity center, which the proposed use would indeed fall within that land use classification. This is a copy of the proposed site plan. To orient you a little bit, if you look about two-thirds down into a circle there, that is the end of the road, that is the cul-de-sac that is existing, but if you carry that to the right, that is Sports Avenue. There are multiple buildings associated with this request. Some are three-story buildings, some are three-four split buildings, meaning there's three floors from one side and four on the other side, given elevation differences. There is a clubhouse and lease office that's right off of the cul-de-sac. Pool and pool house right behind the clubhouse. They're proposing an Uber café. Then these are the location of the live-work units that I referenced earlier. This is the retail building. And this is proposed new right-of-way. They put on the plan to try to come into compliance with our LCI recommendations about establishing a parallel corridor to Spring Road. They will have, most of it will be underground detention, but there is some outside detention, which would be in that far-right corner. There is a stream buffer with some encroachment there, which is explained in your report, as well as the power easement. There are nine variances that are being requested. Staff, in essence, is supportive of two of the nine. Without going through each and every one of those, you know, staff is supportive of the second one, which has to do with the density from 25 to 26, as well as the last one, which reduces the rear setback from 100 to 40 feet. The other ones, staff is not supportive of. These are the proposed building elevations. This would be coming down Sports Avenue towards the cul-de-sac. And this is the Spring Road LCI master plan. To orient you with that, if you look at the intersection of Spring and Cumberland, the property that's shown with green on it is related to utility-type operations. That's not, that's on another track of land. It's the next group of buildings shown there with Spring Road, I mean, Sports Avenue coming off of Spring Road with potential access points back to Cumberland. They have indeed, as I indicated earlier, are providing basically that middle one for future, for future use. Pictures of the subject property, that upper-left one shows the church itself. Staff's recommendation is for denial of this request from GC to MU Conditional. A summary of the reasons we've given you a report, it's all outlined in there, but in terms of this presentation, I'm just going to give you a summary of stuff. Already mentioned the LCI study. The LCI study does talk about Sports Avenue. It's called the "Sports Avenue Node." And within that, it talks about housing types should vary, from attached-to-detached townhomes to cottages and accessory dwelling units. Within the proposal that we have, there is no mix of housing or ownership types. There's nine variances requested. Staff only supports two. I've already referenced that. In terms of the mixed portion of the request, I didn't put the table in this presentation, but y'all have seen it in your report. When you're talking about square footage of all of the building development, approximately 3% of the overall square footage is for something other than the rental units. That would be the 3,000 for the retail and the almost 7,000 for the live-work. So, we're talking about 10,000 square feet out of all of the other square footage that would be dedicated for this. Staff's opinion is this is basically a development of an apartment complex and not really a development of a mixed use. Now, past mixed uses, people that have come in, applied for the exact same classification as MU Conditional. They have set, council has, in essence, by approving those, has set sort of an expectation of what they're looking for. With regard to either a variety of housing, which would be the case with Riverview, or contain several different land uses, which would be Belmont, or no less than 15% retail, and although it wasn't put in here as an oversight, that 15% is referencing jungle. So, that with the combination of the retail uses out front, the publics there, and then the apartments, that split is basically an 85-15% split, which is shown in the table that's in your report. So, the application is basically providing 3% or so to non-apartment uses, which falls well below levels that mayor and council have already established. In addition, mayor and council have stated, either in words or actions, that really they want all future apartment requests to either be integrated into a large mixed-use development or combined with a tear-down and replacement of an existing apartment complex. Standalone multifamily developments, therefore, are no longer encouraged or deemed appropriate as is believed. They rarely contribute to the quality of life or sense of place for the community. In essence, what we're saying there is approval of this request would break with past policies, then, and actions of mayor and council. Approval of this would actually result in the most unbalanced split of land uses allowed in a mixed-use project, and would at best only marginally contribute to the city achieving the goals of the Spring Road corridor. So, with that in mind, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Sudrith. Any questions for Mr. Sudrith?
Yeah, Mr. Sudrith, there's a, I just wanted to review a couple of things and ask a question on it. It states that both, almost, either scenario, scenario one, which is the scenario proposed or a potential mixed-use scenario, scenario two, that almost all of those intersections are going to be rated as an F in those scenarios. And in some of those scenarios, we're looking at a doubling of what would be normally acceptable in terms of surveys. So, for example, the level of survey F is considered unacceptable by most drivers with a delay of greater than 80 seconds. We have some of the intersections, directions, that have delays of 182 and one of 161. So, within the study, it says that for any new developments, we recommend that a travel demand strategies to reduce vehicle trips be planned and implemented. These strategies may include multi-modal trips, carpooling, flex time for employees, better use of transit, and shuttle bus facilities. Does the proposed developer or the city have a plan to implement any of these suggestions for either the scenario one in the traffic study or scenario two, which would be a mixed-use development?
Mr. Bai, I'm going to give you a two-part answer. I'm going to, I'm going to give you one answer, and then we're going to ask our traffic engineer for the city, Eric Randall, to come up and address the network itself with regard to multimodal issues, which in essence would include transit, obviously, with what the state has just done in their last session. That is under a lot of review and conversation and trying to put together the needed groups with the county on that aspect to see if indeed there is a clear direction. In addition to that, previously, before the state had done any of this, the city had decided that we wanted to at least begin here a conversation of transit and if it was a viable alternative for the residents of Smyrna. So, we applied and received a grant from ARC to do that study. The grant was awarded last fall, and we are waiting right now for the final paperwork to come from ARC to begin that particular study. So, from that aspect, I'm very familiar with, but I don't want to go outside of my lane, not to, not to be funny about it, but to put it into the traffic engineers to answer additional questions on that.
Very well said, Mr. Sudrith. Yeah, right. Mr. Randall, welcome.
Good to see you again. I'm going to focus more on the network side of things that was referenced in the document. The couple of paragraphs that I wrote were based on data that was provided by their engineer, by their traffic engineer, based on that level of survey, level of service analysis for the intersections around, and largely, it's external to the project. We've been at capacity in these intersections for a while, and the only real relief is going to be alternate roads or some sort of multimodal. We've just gone through the, I say just, a couple of years ago, with completing the Spring Road. Those, the Spring Road widening, it added the third lane westbound up to Bell Drive. Going outside the scope of this project, a lot of the roadway network improvements that were under the umbrella of the battery were actually warranted during the DRI study for the battery development, based solely on baseline improvements to the, to the network. So, the answer is, I think, to your question, we haven't, there's no room for us to look at more network improvements. The only thing that really can substantially improve is alternate modes. We've made some operational improvements. One of the things I mentioned in my summary is that we are in partnership with Cobb County DOT. They implemented, they installed the hardware for an adaptive timing system on the signals on Spring Road. That's simply a more efficient way of using the roadway network on that corridor to push back the time during rush hour until we get to the point of saturation. We have lots of cars, and there's lots of folks trying to get from 75 east, in both directions, from those areas west of the city. Does that adequately answer your question?
Yeah, that adaptive system's already in use, though. So, that's not anything that's going to help alleviate any of the traffic with this development, is that correct?
Correct. All we would be doing at this point is operationally periodically re-timing the network. Any other questions I can answer for you?
Anybody else got a question, Mr. Randall? Thank you, sir. All right. Good evening and welcome. Come on, Mr. Moore. I'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, tonight. Kevin Moore here, on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning. Appreciate that opportunity, here to represent JLB Realty. Just to...
Yeah, you may have to get in the microphone a little bit with that rain. It's making it difficult to hear.
There we go. That's a lot better. Thanks for that. It's hard to tell how loud it is or not loud from up here. With that, a little bit about JLB Realty. They are a preeminent multifamily and mixed-use developer, not only here in Atlanta and the metropolitan Atlanta area, but across the southeast and Sunbelt areas as well. They do projects like this, and they do them extremely well. And I think you can see that by the sophistication of the deliverables that were made to staff and provided to staff, including the site plan and the attention to detail to take into account the various aspects of city planning, both from a technical... ...bring to the table is that level of sophistication and exceptionalism in what they do. As Mr. Sudrith stated, this is a project, it is a mixed-use project. This mixed-use project is 325 units. And if I can go back to that site plan, I think it's a little bit easier to kind of follow along. I can, 325 units. In addition, there is a 3,000, just over 3,000-square-foot standalone building that was pointed out by Mr. Sudrith. There on the bottom right, that was a site design change that was necessitated so that we could, in fact, incorporate the new public right-of-way that comes basically straight down the site plan that was also pointed out by Mr. Sudrith, so that could be accommodated. In addition, there is almost 7,000 square feet of additional commercial space that's encapsulated in live-work units that were also pointed out by Mr. Sudrith. Those are actual units where the downs, there's one owner who has a office or other type of business that's located on the first floor, and he lives on the second floor, or he or she lives on the second floor. Actual live-work space that's been executed by JLB and other developments, which has been very successful and very popular, is that's real commercial mixed-use space. That's the very definition of mixed-use, mixed-use in the same, in the same actual unit. In addition, what was not discussed or focused on, we believe, by staff in its report, is something that we believe very much is a part of this application and helps support this application, is an actual look and a review of those surrounding uses that were pointed out. The surrounding uses at the front of Sports Avenue, as it intersects with Spring Road, is a Burger King, is a good Indian restaurant, as well as an extended-stay hotel. That's what's at the front of this property and which accesses off of Sports Avenue, coming off of that intersection of Spring Road. Those properties are not dilapidated, they're not in disrepair, they're actively utilized for those specific uses, and actively utilized successfully for those specific uses. And that cannot be simply ignored in looking at how this proposal fits into the overall studies and land use planning that has to take a place when reviewing any zoning application. And in fact, it's those exact uses and the fact that you have Sports Avenue is leading to this property, which consists of now a former church building, that does provide some limitations. It provides some limitations on what can you do, provides some limitations on what should you do as well, and it provides some limitations legally and financially about what is actually possible with this particular property. Turning to the LCI study specifically, because when you review staff's report, that's the primary driver of staff's recommendation for denial, is the LCI study, a study that was conducted and adopted just last year. That LCI study, though, if you look at that study and look at the identified areas, Sports Avenue being one, and there were several others, it looks at that area, at those areas, and specifically Sports Avenue, it's taking it as a blank canvas, as if there's nothing there, as if there are not economic, financial, and existing feasible projects that are there and that have been in use. It pretends they're not there. It comes up with a new land use proposed specifically for Sports Avenue. It's a blank canvas, but that's not what we have before us. That's not what JLB has, that's not what this particular property owner has, and it's not what the city has when looking at what will this property become. There's not a blank canvas. There's an Indian restaurant, there's an extended-stay hotel, there's a Burger King, and now there's an empty, very large building at the end of Sports Avenue. That's the canvas that we're starting with when we look at reviewing this project in terms of a mixed-use project. Moreover, as you turn and look through that LCI study, what you also find is that there are several repeated concepts to that study about not only what should happen here on Sports Avenue, but the repeated concepts, the spirit, the intent, the concepts of the vision that they're describing in that study, and what concepts are brought to bear when you look at this particular property and this particular proposal. Those concepts are more density in this area, specifically more density at Sports Avenue, specifically more density in those areas immediately adjacent to Sports Avenue, specifically more density at the intersection of Cumberland and Spring Road, specifically more density as you get towards the ballpark. Why is that repeated over and over again in terms of density? Because you need the residents to support the level of retail and services that are now going to be coming to this area. Simple as that. If you want to support alternative modes of transportation, if you want to support people visiting, shopping, spending their money at the retail services that you want to support, the quality retail services that you want to support, the quality professional services that you want to support in this area, you need the people. And that's why those, such as the LCI study, is calling for more density in these specific areas. In addition, where does this property and what this proposal conform to that study? It does conform to the study in several key aspects. It brings density, yes, some density to this particular area. This particular area on Sports Avenue is identified as attached townhomes and some detached townhomes. For a 12-and-a-half-acre site plus two restaurants and extended-stay hotel, what's all, only thing that's proposed is some attached and detached townhomes in that LCI study. That's not economically feasible, period. What is economically feasible is to look at this as a mixed-use, which it truly is. The Sports Avenue parcel, if you look at it from Spring Road all the way back on the Sports Avenue, with this proposal, if approved, becomes mixed-use. It becomes two restaurants, a fast-food establishment and an Indian restaurant. It becomes an extended-stay facility that will serve professionals coming to this area, and it serves a higher-density multifamily component in addition to the commercial space that's being proposed here. What does JLB envision for that commercial space here? The retail space here is going to have to draw some people in. It has no frontage, no visibility from Spring Road, so people have to know that it is something they want to go to, such as a chef-driven-type restaurant, where people will know to go there because of who that is and how that's being drawn. In addition, how does this comply with that LCI study? The LCI study repeats again about connectivity, both from a vehicle standpoint and a pedestrian standpoint. What JLB has proposed here is that connectivity. That vertical road you see going up and down your site plan was not part of the original plan. They're proposing to build a section of what will be a public road, a section that's vitally needed as the city tries to connect that alternative road to Spring Road in this area through these various properties. They're doing all they can do to provide that connectivity, which is build that portion of the new road, and they've done so and altered their plan to accommodate that, and that's what that represents, is that connectivity. They're bringing the sidewalks and the people to, from a pedestrian standpoint, to ensure that they're connecting to Spring Road and therefore to the ballpark and to wherever they want to go from a pedestrian standpoint, as well as along the new right-of-way. They are providing mixed-use in this context when you take into account the actual canvas, again, that is present on this property. The other study that was not mentioned by staff was the Georgia Tech study that was also undertaken at the same time. It's on the city website. The Georgia Tech study also was done of this exact same area. The Georgia Tech study looked at this exact same area, looked at this exact same property and called it out. It called it out for 30 units per acre, encouraged in terms of density, which is what we are proposing at 26 units per acre, consistent with somebody else's opinion on land use planning for this particular area. The Georgia Tech study identified through their data and analysis the need for additional multifamily homes and units in this area, and that was a strong demand and an absolute need for that to be coming over the next five to 10 years. Again, that's what we're providing in this proposal. And again, it reiterated the desirability for those uses in this area, specifically to address traffic. In staff's report, their analysis and conclusion, based upon the extensive detailed traffic study that we provided, based upon the detailed review that Mr. Randall provided, their statement was that this proposal would not unduly burden traffic and impact traffic in the surrounding area. That was their conclusion.
Not to cut you off...
You want me to finish up?
Hold on one second. Not to cut you off, but we can't, traffic's already a problem there.
Yes.
Mr. Bai mentioned that it's congested, we have several intersections that are already a challenge, to say that it won't. I'm sorry, I didn't... I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Moore, go ahead and finish.
It's not a problem. I'm simply quoting from what staff's conclusion was. And that was also supported by our traffic study. When you look at traffic, yes, traffic does have a level of service problem along Spring Road. When you're looking at traffic as a whole, what they're looking at though from a traffic study standpoint is then how is this one project then going to add, take away, or burden it even further or not? And that's where that is supported by both the traffic study and by staff. In addition, it's extremely important to understand that the future land use plan for the city of Smyrna for this property, has this property identified as within a regional activity center, and that this proposal, as staff found correctly, and this proposal is consistent with the city's land use plan of a regional activity center, consistent with the land use plan for this property and this area. Furthermore, the staff found that this proposal was not inconsistent or incompatible with the uses of the surrounding properties. It found that it would actually improve the architectural standards of the area. All correct. Again, going back to the primary driver, the primary driver for staff's recommendation for denial and for what we believe is the resistance to this proposal, is that LCI study. But what I'd love for you to consider here today is that LCI study is a guide, it's not the law, it's just a guide, to help us understand how it could be developed under certain circumstances. And we should look at that and consider that you would look at that study as a guide, as a document to help, but not to mandate. In this instance, we believe we comply and are consistent with key components of that study. Staff also cited previous decisions or policy of the city council as it relates to prior multifamily proposals. But there's no policy, there's no stated adopted policy from city council that's in city code or any planning document. There's some individualized decisions that have been made and some comments that have been made over the last 25 years, but since 2013, when that ballpark was announced and then it was built, it's a different world on Spring Road and Kyle Parkway and Cumberland Boulevard. It changed dramatically, and that has to be taken into account, we would hope. JLB is bringing forward a first-class mixed-use development. It takes advantage of every opportunity that this property can provide to be consistent with the planning documents and studies that have been conducted by this city and to enhance this area and to enhance this property and overall area from a character and a development perspective. I'm here, I can answer any questions. We have representatives of JLB, traffic engineers, civil engineers, we brought the entire team so that we can answer any questions that you might have, and we respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you for the thorough explanation and presentation. At this time, I'd like to ask, are there any questions for Mr. Moore? Mr. Bartlet?
Yes.
Kevin, you might want to stay up there, bud.
Yes, can JLB speak to their experience with mixed-use projects on their other communities or their successes?
Sure, absolutely. They'd love the opportunity, thank you. I'll just take a minute to introduce, did you hear the question? Matt Hallman of JLB. Did you hear the question?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Matt Hallman with JLB Partners. Our experience with other mixed-use in Atlanta, we've got a 290-unit high-rise property on Peachtree and Fifth Street. We've got about 7,500 square feet of retail in that building, 6,000 fronting Peachtree and 1,500 square feet fronting Fifth that's still vacant. The 6,000 square feet on Peachtree has been leased by a single tenant that is basically, his business model is really built off of walk-up traffic. It's what he's deeming as an international food market. He's got tapas, he's got a little provisional section with groceries for whomever, including our residents. He's got coffee, he's got, again, a bakery and, you know, something for breakfast, lunch, dinner. He's got pizza and craft beer, he's got hors d'oeuvres and a wine bar. So kind of every aspect of the day can be, you know, met in that space. We are building a Phase Two in Sandy Springs, at Gateway of Sandy Springs, it's called Collection at Sandy Springs, that's the residential component. We bought 22 acres in, I want to say 2014, and built that out in phases. We actually, due to the size of the retail component, we brought in a retail partner to build 14-acre retail development out front on Roswell Road. You know, that, we put two 300-plus-minus unit mid-rise projects to the rear and gave the retail road frontage that they needed to be viable. It's a grocery-anchored center with the Sprouts and, you know, about another 70,000 square feet of retail space with some office above.
Are you saying 7,000 or 70,000?
70,000 square feet of retail with 20 or so thousand square feet of office on top of two of the retail buildings.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe the Sprouts box was in the 35,000-square-foot range, something like that.
Okay.
In Charlotte, North Carolina, we built a 350-unit mid-rise building, and within the same development, the property was zoned for, you know, mixed-use, so you've got 480,000 feet of zoning for high-rise office, what we brought in, an office developer to build the office. So when Kevin says we're a mixed-use developer, what that typically means for JLB is if we have any inline retail vertically integrated with the residential, that's how we become a mixed-use developer. But if we wind up with a site that, you know, you need to find an anchor for the retail, whether, you know, 20, 30, 40,000 square feet of retail, we would typically bring in a retail partner. And it's very simple as to why, you typically wind up with two good components of each, you know, nothing's perfect for each group, but you got the push and pull on the plans to try to get, you know, both parties there with respect to what makes each of them work really, really well. But back to Atlanta, you know, the 290-unit building in Midtown has got 6,000 square feet, we didn't need to bring in a partner for that, it's really good retail space, fronting Peachtree, and we feel like we wound up with a really good retail use out of that, you know. And in order to do that though, we felt it was important to, you know, pro forma the space appropriately, which is to say, make sure we don't have to get a really high rent so that we don't have lenders and partners telling us, you need to go lease this space to the first person that comes along, so that we could wait on the right party to move in, you know, at the right time. And we feel like we, you know, hit a home run in that regard, because the space wound up being a very, very good amenity, not only for our residents upstairs, but for the surrounding area, you know. And, you know, that was the hope, you know, when we went into that property, that we could wind up with something like that. But of course, you don't know, you know, until you get there.
Can you answer your question, Mr. Bartlet?
Yeah, the one thing that those have are pretty high-profile intersections, frontages.
Right.
Which this property is really limited with when it comes to that mixed-use vision.
It is.
So. It's not a question, that's just a note.
Sure. You know, I can, you know, you're right, I mean, we don't have good retail frontage, we don't front Spring Road, we don't have a good retail window at all, you know, our visibility for our retail is really by all rights bad. And we do, we have seen others overcome that in the past. What you still have to do is you still have to build a nice elevation with storefront, with awnings, and you got to create, you know, nice landscaping out front, and for us to drive residents past that, you know, to come to our leasing office, it's got to look really nice. And it can't be certain uses that would keep people from driving further into the property. So, you know, I'm not going to argue with you though over that, you're absolutely correct.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Did you have a question, Denny?
No.
No, I'm sorry. All right. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for anybody that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and please direct all your comments to the board. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come before you. I am a resident of Smyrna. I have been a resident for well over 40 years. My name is Cynthia Lawrence, and I live in the Fallingwater community and have been there a very long time. My daughter-in-law happens to teach at Argyle Elementary School, and my grandson currently attends there. I have a lot of concerns, and to begin with, what brought me into learning and recognizing what's happening with our city was because of the stadium. And I failed to tell you that up until that time, I was not paying attention to what was going on here, but I am now. I would like to point out, and I really appreciate the wonderful drawings, they're very colorful, they're great. However, my math is not great, I didn't notice that for 325 apartments, there's only 400 parking spaces. 400 parking spaces does not accommodate 325 units. And I don't know where anybody else lives, but I know in my community, my husband and I both drive a car individually, and when someone comes to visit, we can only have one car to visit. That doesn't even accommodate two cars per unit. So I think that's something that really needs to be taken into consideration, and I really appreciate what the staff recommendation has made towards this committee. I think it's really important that you look very carefully at those details, I really appreciate that. There are many, many aspects to this that really do need to have a careful look. The mixed-use, as recommended by the staff and what I have learned from some of the city council members, does not even come close to being what was recommended. Sorry, guys, you need to do a better job. Maybe a sports arena, maybe some other recreational facility could be built in there, it does need to be used. And yes, it is extremely, extremely congested. I would like not to see any more congestion going on there. The other impact that I'd like to mention, and there are still so many other points that I'd like to make, but I know my time is short. I moved here over 40 years ago because Smyrna was a nice little hometown community. Agreed? We will lose that. We will lose that if this comes in. Now, maybe if they could choose 150, maybe 175 units, yeah, that's a possibility. Let's rent and sell all the other ones that are currently in existence. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. All right, guys, let's keep the comments to us up here, okay? We're not going to start a cheerleading, we're not going to do any of that. Let's keep it as clean as possible, three minutes goes really fast when you're at the podium. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, my name is Don McWethy, I live in Afton Downs on 2025 Oakley Trace. I had scribbled some notes that I was going, some points I was going to make, but they were more than adequately covered by staff and the traffic engineer because they're exactly what I wanted to say, that the city hasn't approved a standalone apartment complex for over 20 years. This is, while they call it mixed-use, the amount of retail space really is very small. And the idea that it would not have a negative impact on traffic, to me, just boggles the mind. I mean, I just can't see that. So, I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for coming.
And just tell you that I strongly oppose this.
I appreciate, we appreciate your comments, appreciate you coming, and we appreciate your brevity.
My name is Alan Scott, and I've had the privilege of being the lead pastor at Cumberland Community Church for 12 and a half years. And I have poured my leadership into the church, into Smyrna, and have tried to lead this congregation to do the same at every opportunity. So that's approximately 1,100 citizens being called by our church to love and give back to the city of Smyrna in real tangible ways. Because of our dogged commitment to serve Smyrna, we've been able to physically transform nine schools with the help of hundreds upon hundreds of Cumberland volunteers at each school. We've helped hundreds of unemployed folks move into career jobs, and we've served hundreds more in a multiplicity of ways. After 12 years, I'm here to tell you that we only want to do more for this city. Since 2008, when Cumberland was less than 200 people, we've wanted to give ourselves away to Smyrna. This desire has cost us time, energy, and countless of dollars. Since 2009, we've given away over $1.8 million locally and globally. However, we've done this willingly and with great love for our neighbors. We've worked incredibly hard to form partnerships, deep relationships, and a stellar reputation in our fair city. Now, I know we share similar hearts for the good people of Smyrna. Over the years, we've elicited the help of many city leaders, and you have willingly complied. We are very grateful for the partnership and the cooperation of all the city leaders. As we've given ourselves away, God has given back to Cumberland Community Church. We are now a healthy congregation of about 1,100 people on Sunday mornings. With our current health and strength, we only want to give ourselves away more. We want to double the size of our collective community center, which does jobs training and counseling and GED certification, restoration ministries. Our new location at South Cobb and Church Street will also feature a soccer field to enrich our community further. We want to be a more visible change agent for Smyrna with our move, and with your help, we can do just that. We need to sell our current property at 3110 Sports Avenue. The delay is costing us thousands of dollars that we do not have. The proposed Sports Avenue project, we think, is an excellent one. I support the zoning application of JLB. The JLB project represents the perfect location for young and old alike to have access to Smyrna, the Braves Battery, all of Atlanta with proximity to I-75 and I-285. The proposed project fits well into the recent city planning studies, and it will add significantly to the tax base of the area. However, what indeed makes this opportunity outstanding is how the project enables Cumberland Community Church to give to Smyrna more. On behalf of all the good people of Cumberland, I'm asking for your support with JLB zoning application, the sale of our current property, and the relocation to our new. Thanks for your leadership, I appreciate your time, and I pray for you always, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, who's next? Oh, you, you got to wait a second, she was up first. No, no, we're all about fairness here. Good evening and welcome.
Hello, I'm Marie Smith with Village on the Green, and I just want to express my opposition against additional apartments in Smyrna. We already have Belmont and John Quill, and if we're adding additional housing, I would like for it to be tax-based for ownership for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you Chairman and Council. My name is Kyle Wilkins, I am in Ward 6, 1920 Winbridge Drive. I believe this application is the most realistic proposal that allows the property to be used most efficiently and quickly. I think vacant space on that property for a period of time would be detrimental to the surrounding developments, and the density is what is important to keep the area that we've put so much money into alive, and I think this serves that purpose. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, my name is Avril Gordon, and I'm Ward 6, and I totally oppose this, well, what LBJ would call mixed use of the property. Also, as much as I like the pastor and what he has done, it does not serve the community as a whole, it is just getting in the most amount of money for what you can get for the property. However, the argument is that the traffic is horrendous, the strain on police, the strain on the facilities of Smyrna would definitely be more, much more. I hear a ton of sirens going off all the time, I never used to do that. So, if you're not going to take that into account, what's the whole point? The point is to give a better life to the people of the city of Smyrna who pay the taxes, well, our taxes go up because everybody's using more water, everybody's using more facilities because they have to, more police, more fire, is that taken into account? I did not hear that from the developers, all I heard was that this is fabulous, this is terrific, they don't live here. All I heard was that this is fabulous, this is terrific, they don't live here. We live here, and I oppose it. There you have it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Scott McDierman, and I am representing, I live at fourteen-oh-five Wedmore Way. I am representing members of the Smyrna community that oppose the rezoning of this property at Spring Road and Sports Avenue to build two hundred and fifty, two hundred and twenty-five unit apartment complex. We believe this rezoning request is bad for the city of Smyrna for the following reasons. A development of this size will add an estimated two hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred cars to an already crowded Spring Road corridor. This will increase the commute times along Spring Road during normal morning and evening rush hours from Cobb Parkway to Atlanta Road. This property is locked in, locked in by CSX Railway and also Georgia Power and Colonial Pipeline Facilities that restrict entry and exit to a single point. There are no other direct alternatives for Smyrna residents to reach the Cumberland Business District or I-75 that avoids this Sports Avenue intersection. Three new apartment complexes, Belmont Hills, John Quill Plaza, and the Battery, have been built in the Smyrna area in the last two years, which created excess apartment capacity that has not been fully leased. This development, the development of the Emerson Center, which is also on the books, will add additional excess capacity and make the situation worse. We should encourage developers to redevelop existing decades-old apartment properties like Galleria Courtyards on Spring Road, which is a fourteen-acre facility that is long past its prime. The proposed apartment complex on Sports Avenue provides no benefit to the citizens of Smyrna and therefore does not merit a rezoning. Argyle Elementary does not have the capacity to support these additional students from the development. The Cobb County Board of Education estimates that Argyle will exceed its capacity by almost a hundred and fifty students by 2019. Cumberland Community Church had multiple offers for their property, including offers that did not require rezoning. They chose the option that gives them the greatest financial benefit, but unfortunately, it has the largest negative impact on the members of the Smyrna community. We understand their desire to receive a large financial reward from their investment, but we believe that the option that they selected will negatively impact the quality of life for the residents of Smyrna for decades to come. We ask for your consideration to deny this zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDierman. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this, this opportunity to speak on behalf of opposing this, what do you call it?
Application.
Application, yes. My name is Carolyn, Carolyn Jacobs, and I live at five-oh-oh-four Bell Drive. And I say I'm very sorry that Cumberland Church took upon themselves to make this decision without, you know, first, I guess, praying about it or fasting, because if you want to be a good steward of God's money, you get His permission first. And not following, being obedient and being a good steward of God's money, you get, you get issues like this. There are consequences, and that's what, that is why we are here today. And I am opposing, I live just, what, two seconds from where, uh, Sports Drive, and it takes me fifteen minutes to get to Cobb Parkway, because like I say, I'm on Bell Drive. And with the school buses and everything, it is, and I'm only eight miles from my office, it can take me forty-five minutes, so that would add another fifteen minutes. So I am opposing, and I do hate that there are not good stewards of God's money.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jacobs. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Chairman. My name is Will Dempsey. I live at thirty-three-ninety Campbell Road, or Campbell Highway, as it's kind of become. And I'm sorry to say it that way, but that, that's the reality of it. I've been there for ten years, actually, like, two days ago. It was a ten-year anniversary. My wife and I, I got married, she moved in two years ago, and I've seen this city wonderfully develop from when we had that eyesore, not completed development at Spring and Campbell, uh, Spring and Atlanta for a long time. We've had all these wonderful mixed-use developments come up. It's, it's done a wonderful thing for the revitalization of Smyrna, and I'm, I'm very excited to be, I've always been very excited to be a citizen of our town. But what I would like to say is, I, I'm absolutely not in favor of this, this proposed mixed-use development. They're apartments. I, I get, I get what the, what the nomenclature is, but it's not, you know, it, it doesn't really bring anything, in my uneducated layman's opinion, to what the city has been doing, much like the other developments that I've seen popping up and being carefully considered and developed over the last ten years. I love the way the city's going, I love the direction it's going, but I don't, I don't see benefit for the city. I, I know that the church has been a warmly welcomed member of our community. I know they have done a tremendous amount of good, but if this development, if this variance is granted to this project, they, a couple miles to the west, won't have to deal with the ramifications of the traffic. And when I said that I live on a highway, I, I'm, I love the fact that it's a vibrant community. I've had my cable wires snapped twice on my own little road, and it's a residential neighborhood. It's a clearly marked school zone, thirty-five miles an hour, and my little intersection, right, where Argyle kind of sits in search to it, is twenty-five. If I've seen anybody adhere to the posted speed limits in the last five years, I, I can't remember them. And I have a tremendous amount of respect and a lot of family members in federal and local law enforcement. I don't see a lot of enforcement of the speed law, of the posted speed line, speed on my street. It's a school, and it's become kind of dangerous. And the traffic, obviously, a new development would affect the traffic on Campbell, as we all know. Campbell is a bit of a challenge. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to address you, and thank you for the opportunity to, to give my comments. Thanks much.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Hunter Carl. I live in Ward One, and I am here to support the zoning application of JLB. I'm in support of the move for Cumberland Community Church, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, there was somebody ahead of you, but it's, it's ladies first, come on. Sorry, it's gonna take him a minute to get up here. That's what he gets for sitting on the back row.
My name is Nina Medina. I live at twenty-five-thirty-five Rollingview Drive, and I oppose the apartment complex. I've lived in my home for ten and a half years, and I actually, Windcliff Galleria borders the back of my home. Windcliff Galleria is an apartment, a, a complex. I think they have something like two or three hundred units, maybe more. Since I've lived there, there've been murders, rapes, a lot of crime. I don't particularly like living next to this apartment complex. And also, in the past ten and a half years, I've had several friends who have purchased homes or rented homes in my neighborhood, Spring Hill Community. And as soon as the, the woman gets pregnant or they decide to start having a family, they move away from the Smyrna area because Argyle Elementary School is rated in the bottom twenty percent of elementary schools in Georgia. And I believe, from what I've heard from people whose children have gone there, that part of the reason is because of the type of apartment complexes that we have zoned for the school. By my unprofessional calculations, just by doing a little bit of internet sleuthing, it looks like zoned for Argyle Elementary School, we already have one thousand three hundred apartment units, less than six hundred homes, and about three hundred townhomes. So if anything, I would really like to see some type of investment, townhome or something where people who live in this space have some tie to the community versus just the transient nature of apartment renters. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and your sleuthing. Good evening and welcome. I'm sorry, she was in front of you.
It's okay. As a good pastor would say, ladies go first. So my name is Skylar Higgins. I reside at twenty-two-hundred Spring Road, which is also the current location of Countryside at Cumberland, as you're going down Spring Road, and I rise in opposition to this. We are really concerned about the type of proposed development that's coming here, and I almost want to say to myself, if you would've told us that an apartment developer was gonna come in and develop apartments, and then just down the street, propose storage units, we would've almost thought it was funny. So I just rise here to oppose this one, and I know that's later on in the agenda, but another meeting, another day. Right now, this one's just in front of us. I stand to oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Dan Brown. I live at seven-two-zero Bank Street. I commute on Spring Road every day, and I support this application, given the constraints surrounding this property. What is proposed is what is realistic for this location. There are nine zoning review factors to evaluate when considering rezoning. Staff believes the applicant meets all criteria except one. That one exception is because staff believes this proposal does not comply with the city's LCI study. However, there's several challenges in the LCI. Smyrna's LCI vision requires the removal of the Burger King, the Indian Restaurant, the Extentist Day, which are all out of the control of the applicant. In this vision, the current GC zoning is ignored, and the property is suggested to become one hundred percent condominiums. Despite this lack of variety in the LCI, staff criticizes the applicant for not having enough variety of retail paired with the apartments to fit the mixed-use rezoning. However, I commend the applicant for achieving, achieving mixed use when LCI doesn't contemplate a variety of mixed use at all. I support the mix of retail under the apartments, but more importantly, the applicant achieves the LCI vision of interparcial access in order to gain an alternate connection to Cumberland Parkway. The next step, of course, would be the Colonial Pipeline to do their part to help finish the LCI vision by extending the proposed interparcial drive. I believe another concern is that staff is unfairly comparing this mixed-use application to John Quill, Belmont, and Riverview, because these other developments had a larger variety of retail versus residential. Staff believes a precedent was set by not allowing mixed-use development with less than fifteen percent retail. However, these past developments were anchored by fronting either a major intersection with close proximity to Smyrna Market Village, that's John Quill and Belmont, or fronting the Chattahoochee River, which is a significant anchor for Riverview. This location, however, is not a fair comparison because it has zero visibility from Spring Road and is landlocked by apartments, train tracks, and Colonial Pipeline. These constraints limit the ability to attract additional retail users, so I think we need to be realistic with this, this particular mixed-use development. I also want to caution, this property is currently zoned GC. Somebody said there was, they were concerned that they are under contract with the mixed-use developer, when it could've been gone to somebody that didn't need a rezoning. However, this, the GC zoning would allow a developer to propose a multitude of uses that would not require any input from the public or city council and be further outside the vision of the LCI. Opposing this application could open the door to permitted uses like automobile, mobile home sales class, car rental facilities, and car washes. This application is better than what could be there without any of our input.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ma'am, you're next. I was gonna sit him down, but you so politely sat down quickly. Good evening and welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. I live at currently at Galleria Manor Senior Apartments, and I moved here from another state, and I primarily moved there because of the serenity and the way it's well maintained.
Your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Janice Lo.
Thank you.
Okay, and since then, I've seen traffic increase, making it almost impossible to get out. And even though they've improved the roads and they've made it where it moves along a little bit smoother, if they allow this to happen, I have a couple of main issues with that, one of which is the safety issue. Primarily for the area that they're talking about developing, it's only one way in and one way out. I understand that there's perimeters around it that's not allowing them to be able to use the back end, and there's another area that's already saturated that they wouldn't be able to use that, so I would think that they would need to present a road first before they actually develop any kind of apartment buildings introducing four hundred more people into that area. That's the main thing I have with the safety as far as us. If there's a natural disaster again in that particular area, we, it would almost make it impossible for us to get out. We need a lot more transportation in that area. This may be one thing that would be advisable to put in that area, something to help us out. Again, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that it, the saturation is almost ridiculous at this point. So to add even more stress, and I realize the church has done a wonderful job at helping our area, and we really appreciate that, but then please take in consideration, with the seniors, it's already difficult for us to get in and out. They use that entrance in and out like a thorough frayer. We have to really quickly get across our own little private little street because they're speeding through there at thirty miles an hour. So I understand what the one lady said, that this is gonna be only worse for us, so please take that in consideration. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lo. Anybody else like to speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Last call? No, just kidding. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Laura Lamb. I live at five-twenty-six Pine Dew Drive in Vennettwood toward Four. I am opposed to this development for a few reasons that have already been stated, but one that has not is, if you actually take time to look at the site of the area and go past the Burger King and the Indian Cuisine, you will find apartment complexes lining behind the Braves Stadium already, and you will see it across the street and then behind the area. So within that two-mile radius is circled with apartment complexes. In a, right now, we're in a good economy. Everybody knows that in a tanking economy, we've been at a good one for ten years, the cycle is coming back. The first thing to shift demographically are apartment complexes. Like a previous person said, they've had a lot of issues with crime. Another issue with this is the alternative uses for this. As an urban designer and architect, if you want to present something to the community, you should consider then other things that will also help the community, if you're looking about retail and money. Across the street, you have the mall, you have the Galleria, which brings convention centers, and then you have the Braves. You could work on a sports complex that we could teach the kids across the street by elementary, support the Braves Stadium and the convention center. A boutique hotel with mixed use will actually limit the amount of people coming up, can't date on a daily use instead of apartment complex. That, as people have said, will bring not just three hundred and twenty-five, but more than that, because two cars per, per apartment. The comment that was made a few minutes ago about the frontage and it being different than John Quill and all the other ones just goes to show further to me that it doesn't belong there. Even if you pull retail, it is that far removed. If you're driving up and down Spring and you have a café on Rev, at Rev, and you have food on the main road, will you really pull out into an apartment complex to eat at one restaurant if it's not supporting the community more? The, they were asking for an increase of from fifteen percent to ninety-seven, I believe, that correct the numbers for the rental units. That alone, that number goes to almost a hundred percent of purely just residential. That leaves very little for actual support of retail. And the last comment, I was making notes, and if you saw, I have my kids with me, so give me a minute. That's how important this is to me. Oh, yes, someone mentioned that already about being a steward of our money. I don't think the community should have to bail them out about the decision they made. I support churches in the community and servant our community, but even in the way it was stated, it was like, we help, we love, we need something to cover our expenses.
Thank you very much for your comments. Good evening and welcome.
Hey, good evening. My name is Cameron Creach. I live at seventeen-sixty Shawnee Place in Ward Six. I'm here in support of this recommendation to rezon the property. So one thing I've heard a lot about tonight is traffic in the area, and being somebody that lives in a house in this area, one thing that I love about it is being able to walk to so many different places and so many different retail places that already exist. For example, the Battery, for example, Belmont, for example, Smyrna Market Village. I think that increasing the, the density of population within the, the apartment, or the, the area over there would only increase the amount of people involved in these, these retail. over there would only increase the amount of people involved in these retail activities in this area. I'm also a... Sorry, my first meeting.
Take your time, Norris.
I'm also a proud congregant of Cumberland Christian Church, Cumberland Community Church. Public speaking is never my best thing. But anyways, I can very proudly speak to the amount of prayer and thought that's gone into this decision. I've been in the meetings. I know for a fact that there is a large gathering of people currently during this meeting praying over just the benefit of everybody in the community. We want the right thing to be done, and I don't think that the decision was made simply to bail us out, simply to, you know, get us the most money for our property. We are looking to see what is best for the community and do that. And I fully believe that we're seeking that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Creach. You did a fine job. There's a young lady right here to the right is next. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Nancy Sapp, and I live at 2952 Lexington Trace Drive. I'm in Ward 2, and I've been a homeowner in Smyrna for 22 years. I am an employed senior citizen, and I drive Spring Road daily. I support Cumberland Community Church and the JLB application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sapp. Can't break the rule now.
Good evening. My name is Jane Caniff, and I'm a resident at 1496 Roswell Street. I've been a member of Cumberland Community Church for 21 years, and I've been a resident of Smyrna for 12 of the last 14 years. And I support the JLB Enterprises' proposal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Robert Pennell. I'm a resident of Smyrna. I live in Vining's Point on Wedmore Court, lived there 10 years. My house backs up to Campbell Highway, as the gentleman said. We're well acquainted with traffic in the area by virtue of that. My wife and I, who's also here, we're opposed to this rezoning application, primarily because of the traffic that it would add to an already overburdened Spring Road, owing in part to the Battery, which I know is outside Smyrna City limits, but it's still part of the facts of life. There's been a lot of discussion, as is appropriate, about the criteria for rezoning. Surely to goodness, one criteria for rezoning must be common sense, and it must be having the ability to pass the smell test. Be nerved to assert that this is a mixed-use development? It boggles the imagination. It doesn't pass the smell test. It doesn't make common sense. Words have plain meaning. Mixed use are two words in the English language that have a plain meaning. I would submit to you that if you can bring yourselves to reclassify this as a mixed-use development, then that you could watch the recent Triple Crown races. And if a horse was gray and had a couple of black stripes painted on him, you'd call him a zebra. A horse with two black stripes on him is as much a zebra as this development is a mixed use, as this proposal is a mixed-use development. Doesn't pass the smell test, doesn't pass common sense. I want my public leaders to operate with those two criterion in mind, as well as all of the technical ones that other people have mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kaitlin Walker. I live in Ward Number 6 here in Smyrna. I actually grew up in Cobb County my entire life, and if you would have told me 15 or 20 years ago that I would end up raising my family and starting my family in Smyrna, Georgia, I would have laughed at you. So I'm here to be a proponent of JLB, and... I like the application, because I think young professionals and young families, that's what they're looking for here. They want to be able to walk to the Battery, and isn't that why we wanted the Battery so close to our city? Is to draw new young families in, so I am a proponent of the application.
Thank you very much for your comments. Good evening and welcome.
How are you? My name is Lisa Ruff, and I live in City Council, Ward 4. I fully support Cumberland Community Church and the zoning application for JLB.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome.
Hey, thanks for giving me a chance to chat with you guys today. My name is Bryant Malone, and I live at 2645 Leefmore Drive in Ward 5. And I've gotten to listen to a lot and learn a lot tonight, and I've really just enjoyed this opportunity. This is my first city council meeting, and I...
This is the planning and zoning.
Sorry, planning and zoning.
Let's not get that.
Sorry, I'll go to that one next. It's nothing like Parks and Rec, the TV show that I've watched, so it's not quite as funny. But I am honored to be here, and I thank you guys for your time and letting us chat with you guys. I learned a lot tonight, and I've taken in a whole lot of information. And I came to speak on behalf of Cumberland Community Church. My wife and I have lived in Smyrna, Georgia for two years now, and we absolutely love it. We love everything about living here. We tell our friends to move here. I work in an office with several thousand people who are young professionals, young millennials who are looking for opportunities like this to move in. In fact, I could tell you 10 close friends that I have that live just on the other side of Cobb Cloverleaf and the Walton Residence, close to the river, who are incredible people at contributing to their community and buying in. A lot of them actually drive across Cobb Cloverleaf through all this terrible traffic I've heard about to come to Smyrna Food Truck Tuesday and contribute to our community in that way, and several different things like that. So I've lived in several apartments in my life, and I've never killed anybody at this point. So I just want to speak on behalf of people who live in apartments. They're not all going to be terrible residents, and they will contribute to our community. And I also think it's worth noting Atlanta is one of the fastest-growing metropolitan areas in all of the country, and building more residence for people to come in and live in the city of Smyrna, I think, is a great move for our city. So I'm here to stand and say that I support the move of JLB into the property that they're currently in. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, anybody else? You just barely came in under the gun.
I was waiting for that right moment. Good evening. My name is Sabner Ravan. I'm resident of 4009 Union Walk Circle, Ward 4. I just want to mention that I think a lot of the decisions that have been made that affect a lot of the comments that I've heard today opposing the development were made, I think, before JLB put in their application, I think, with the Battery coming in. I think that automatically brought a lot of people there. I think in order to support the way that the development is moving, I think it does require some density and some movement. I think over the past couple of years, since the Battery came in, you see a lot more walk-in traffic, and I think that's the type of support that the city probably needs. And I think in order for a lot of that to happen, I think there needs to be some density. I don't think, again, with some of the comments that were made about, you know, people necessarily because they live in apartments, that they're going to be bad neighbors. I disagree with that, but all that to say that I would like to share my support for the application for JLB. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and speak about this issue. I'm Chuck Dunlop. I live at 4190 Ridgehurst Drive, Ward 6. I fully support this project. I lived in Smyrna for 13 years. I drive Spring Road almost daily. I have a daughter that goes to Campbell High School, and we're deeply embedded in this community. I am a member of Cumberland Community Church. We prayed very hard over this decision for several years, and I've been a member of the church since 1999, and I've seen what's happened in this area from that time. And I think this is a very realistic use for this property, and I think that as the city looks at options, I don't know that you can come up with a better plan for this property realistically. And as far as the traffic, from what I've understood, the studies that have been done, and looking at the full corridor use of Spring Road, I just feel like adding this is going to also drive a lot of opportunities for people to also live and work in this area and walk and go do different activities. So I fully support it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunlop. Good evening and welcome.
How are you? I'm Alice Waldrop. I am from Ward 4. I live at 936 Sidney Falls Lane, just outside of the King Springs Elementary School, and very proud to say that it's one of the best in the state of Georgia. But I am here to say that I firmly, firmly am convinced that this is a good move for the JLB, for the properties. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, anybody else? All right. We're going to close the public portion of the meeting at this time. We have gone at length, letting you guys speak in favor of and opposition to this application. You know, as board members, the most contentious cases are always surrounding multifamily uses. And it's probably because of a lot of prayer being thrown up in the room. This is by far the most peaceful and kind exchange that I've experienced with apartments in the whole time I've been on the board. So we're all appreciative to you all for your kind comments, for following the rules, for not starting a riot, and for not throwing anything at us, which, you know... So anyway, I just wanted to extend that to the church, the members, all the citizens here. I really appreciate all your comments and respect all your comments. Very valid discussion tonight. We did extend almost 45 minutes for public input. The application had the applicant spoke at my count for about 16 minutes before we started asking him questions. So in lieu of that, I'd like to ask the applicant if there's anything else he would like to add. He doesn't have to, but in fairness to the applicant. Are there any questions that you heard that were brought up that you'd like to address? Any of that, just to give you an opportunity to...
I certainly don't want to go on the other 16 minutes, so thank you, and I appreciate that opportunity and agree with your comments. Having done this for over 20 years, I do appreciate those that spoke both in support and in opposition, and the tenor of those comments is actually refreshing, given what I do for a living.
By choice.
By choice. You sign up to hear it every month, so yes. Exactly.
I'm pretty sure your pay's better than mine.
Potentially. One thing, just on behalf of apartments generally, and I think one of the last speakers said it. I dare say if I asked anybody in this room who's ever lived in an apartment to raise their hand, you'd have almost 100%. Not quite, but you would have nearly a large, large substantial number of people would raise their hand, because at one point or time or another, we've all, or most of us, or a vast, vast majority of us, have lived in an apartment, either by need or by choice, because of circumstances, or because that's what we wanted to do, or that's what our parents took us. That doesn't make each and every one of us a detriment to our society or our community. This type of apartment proposal, which is a mixed-use proposal with apartments, achieves part of what the LCI study envisions. It also provides for renters by choice and provides for what we think would be a preeminent location and development. Now specifically, I wanted to hit a couple of things. Number one, as regards to traffic, just to make it clear, in reading the staff report, their finding as to traffic, based upon the information provided by the city engineer, "The proposed development is not expected to cause a burden to the existing street network or transportation facilities." That's based on the review by the city engineer and based on the traffic study, extensive traffic study that was submitted. So that's based upon professional review and expert review. And I let that stand on its own, but I didn't want to think anyone in this room to leave thinking that that wasn't a true statement as reflected from the report. Not an opinion of mine. Also, as it relates to school impact, specifically with school impact, I heard that it will have a negative school impact at Argyle's over capacity. Based on the information provided by the Cobb County Board of Education, which we obtained, because we have to provide and obtain a school impact report, Argyle Elementary is currently under capacity by 141 students. Campbell Middle and High School are currently over capacity. It's really Campbell Middle and Smyrna High School are currently over capacity by 150 students and 217 students respectively. But those will be relieved, those capacity issues will be relieved through the improvements planned in the SPOLOST 5. So that's the school impact, meaning there's no school impact. That's from the Board of Education, not from me, and even not from your city of Smyrna staff. That's from the Cobb County Board of Education. Lastly, as it relates to mixed use and this concept and this vision, if we for a moment were to close our eyes and think about this property on Sports Avenue, and specifically the property as I described it above, which is that property which is encapsulated by the railroad tracks all the way to Spring Road. It's not that far. You can hit a golf ball down it, as long as you hit the road and let it kind of drift down. But it's a parcel that was developed commercially in parcels, this parcel. But if I asked you to close your eyes and say, if this application included two, or actually three specialty restaurants or retail sites, a boutique hotel, and 325 multifamily units, I dare say we would have received staff support, we would have received support from others, potentially even support from this planning and zoning board here tonight. But that's what this property is. If you consider what this property is a part of being the Sports Avenue parcel, that's what it is. The boutique hotel is an extended stay hotel that serves a very specific need and market. You have a specialty fast food restaurant, a specialty Indian cuisine restaurant. You have the proposed specialty retail site that's part of this and 325 multifamily units. That's what this is. This is proposing to be exactly what the canvas has provided us and will provide us for the very long foreseeable future. And that's what JLB's application provides, is that consistency in compliance with the canvases before us, as well as with the vision that's been produced by the LCI study. And again, we respectfully request your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore. Are there any further questions from the board, any discussion at this time? All right. No. I'm sorry, Mr. By. That part's over. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Just real quick, I appreciate the efforts of the package, the layout, and what y'all have gone through with staff regarding this submittal. I just think that mixed use is difficult. It shouldn't be easy, and it's not easy if you look at the developments around Smyrna. Nothing has come together smoothly. It's been an effort. You have to be creative when you're going to go for a mixed use. We're advising, we're an advisory board, and we have to advise mayor and council a certain way. And I will always look at it individually... way, and I will always look at it individually based on project. I'm not against apartments. I'm against unsmart development, poor development. So with that, I'm going to make a notion to deny zoning requests, Z17-0 MU conditional for the development of mixed-use project on 10.14 acres, land lots 845, 846, at 3110 Sports Avenue.
We have a motion, Mr. Bartlett, to deny. Do we have a second? We have a second, Ms. Harrington. All those in favor of denying the application, or in opposition too, please vote. The denial was approved, 7-0. Good luck, guys. Thank you very much for your application, Mr. Moore. You did a fantastic job. Yeah. Is all right to keep going? Does anybody need a break? I don't want to take a break, but I want to... You guys all right? Anybody need to go?
That?
Yeah. Yeah, right. Anybody need a break? Okay, good. All right. I know that, it's obvious, right?
Good job, Mr. Powell.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you could please, we're going to try to continue on with our meeting. If you'd exit quietly, we really appreciate you guys coming out and really meant what I said earlier about all the kindness and just, I don't know, kindness to each other in the comments. Very difficult situation. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2018-225. This is zoning application, Z18... Barton, I'm sorry. Zoning request, Z18-009, rezoning from GC to OD conditional for the development of 113,895 square feet of climate-controlled self-storage on a 2.71 acre tract at landlot 810. This is also known as 2520 Spring Road. It's 2520 Spring Road LLC is the applicant. Creative.
All right, thank you. This request will be heard by this board tonight. Y'all make a recommendation to the mayor and council. They will hear it next Monday, the 18th, and make a final decision at that point. The applicant is proposing to rezone 2520 Spring Road from general commercial to OD conditional for the development of 113,000 square foot climate-controlled self-storage facility that will also have some, a little bit of office and commercial space on the front of the property. As the chairman stated, his property is 2.7 acres in size. The property is located at 2520 Spring Road. It's the dilapidated retail center that sits just behind the racetrack development up there. As you can see from this zoning vicinity map, the properties to the north, east, and west are also zoned general commercial. The properties to the southeast and south are RM12. This property is located along Spring Road and has a future land use designation of regional activity center. There will be no requested change to the future land use map with this application, and everything surrounding this property also has a regional activity center, a future land use designation. Here's the proposed plan. They are proposing to demo the existing building and build a new three-story self-storage facility with commercial or retail on the ground level. There'll be 33 parking spaces provided, and with this request, they're requesting following setbacks, a front setback of 50 foot from Spring Road, a side setback from 20 feet, and then a rear setback of 90 feet. This is the location of the retail and commercial. Along with this request, they're proposing a 10-foot landscape buffer. And then along the rear of the property, in compliance with our LCI study, they're proposing to dedicate 25 feet of a thoroughfare through there. So when the city plans to make that connection, we'll have that property available. With this request, there are seven variances that go along with it. One has to do with the location of the free standing sign. The second one is the reduction in parking from 88 spaces down to 30. Staff is supportive of that request. The traffic generated from these facilities does not warrant 88 parking spaces. They provided us with traffic counts from, and daily visit counts for their other facilities, and we are talking in the range between six and 25 trips a day. Number three, allow parallel parking to the, to parallel the building entrance. We support. Number four, allow the building to exceed 75% of the frontage. As you can see, the frontage along Spring Road, the property bottlenecks up there, so there is a hardship with this property that warrants that variance. Number five, a setback reduction from 50 feet to 35 feet along residential property, and that's that, on this, on this map is the top of the property. And that backs up to Alder Park and their recreational facility, their tennis courts and pools and stuff like that. So they are not backing up to any residential uses at that point. The sixth request is to reduce the side setback, or I'm sorry, the rear setback from 100 feet down to 90 feet. We support that, and the side setback from 35 feet down to 20. These are the proposed building elevations. And as you can see, the uppermost is the northern elevation. It'll be behind the racetrack and facing Spring Road. The next elevation down is, oh, I'm sorry. That's the eastern elevation at the top. The next one down is the northern one that's behind Spring Road. And then the third elevation down is the western elevation. And then finally, you got the southern elevation at the bottom. Here's the existing building, and then some pictures of the existing properties to give you some context of what's going on in the area. Community Development is recommending approval of the rezoning from GC to OD conditional with standard conditions from Section 1201 that deal with stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, burying debris of on-site, street lights, and landscaping requirements. In addition to those standard conditions, we're proposing some special conditions. Number nine deals with the setbacks stated earlier. Number 10 is a requirement for lighting to be low-intensity lighting, and it should stay on the property. Number 11 deals with the brick enclosure for the dumpster facility. 12 requires a dumpster to have a rubber lid. 13 is a requirement for the 10-foot landscape buffer. 14 deals with HVAC units and being located on the roof. The applicant has approached the city since the writing of this report and asked if there's an ability to locate those units on the ground and screen them with either architectural features or landscaping features, but that they're not visible from the right-of-way. Staff has reviewed that. We are in support of that request, and we're amenable to amending that stipulation to address that. Number 15 prohibits neon signs. Number 16 prohibits the use of metal paneling siding on exterior facade of the building. 17 requires the provision of a fire suppression system, a sprinkler system for the building. 18 prohibits the use, or the rental of U-Haul trucks and trailers or similar moving trucks. 19 prohibits outside storage on the site. 20 requires a developer to be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 21 requires the developer to be responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the Fire Marshal's Office. 22 requires street trees along Spring Road. 23 is the dedication of the right-of-way we talked about earlier along the southern portion of the property. 24 ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan submitted. 25 ties the approval of the zoning to the elevation submitted, provided that they eliminate the metal paneling. And then 26 is additional stipulations that were submitted by the applicant during the zoning process. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions for Mr. Martin? Yes, Ms. Harrington.
Rusty, can you take a look at the aerial map, the one with the yellow on it? Can you clarify the address of the car wash and the subject property? They appear to be the same.
That map was not provided by us.
Okay.
So I don't know what you're looking at.
Want to take a look at it for us?
The car wash has the same address.
I had to go and look at our GIS to see what the true addressing of the car wash is. It just may be an error.
Okay.
But it'll...
It is a separate parcel.
It's a separate parcel, and it'll have its own parcel identification number.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Martin? All right. Thank you, Rusty. All right. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application.
Fine, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning commission, Doug Dillard with Persley, Freeze, and Torgerson, 1230 Peachtree Street, Northeast Atlanta, 30309. Let me just commend staff, first of all, for their cooperation and attentiveness. We've had several meetings with them. We've adjusted these elevations and these conditions over time. This is an interesting development, particularly given the size, shape, and location of this particular property, and its current condition, which is fairly deteriorated. We're around, we're next to a gas station. I understand you had a little zoning in front of us tonight from adjacent piece of property, but this is in a changing area, and it's an area where your overlays and your comprehensive plans are looking for some innovative and quality development, and we think we satisfy all of that. We, as Rusty said, we're looking for 109,000 square feet of self-storage. We have 4,426 feet for accessory retail and commercial. So as you're looking from Spring Road to this site, you'll see the facade that we have shown you, then the retail and office will be located there. The proposed use and operation will not be affected by the current negative site conditions. As a matter of fact, we're going to approve it. The applicant's request is consistent with the zoning and uses of surrounding and nearby property, which is small commercial, retail, apartments, car wash, laundry, and racetrack gas station. Self-storage provides a very low intensity and low-traffic use, and our proposed zoning will allow the development of a blighted property to a modern Class A development that I think we can all be proud of, and we will complement and enhance the surrounding area. Staff's conditions are basically acceptable to us. We have handed out to you some minor adjustments, and I'm going to go over those in a minute, but they have recommended approval of the variance requests, which we support, and we have enjoyed working with Ken and Rusty in developing these proposed conditions. If you'll turn to the information that we gave you in a handout on the front, you'll see we've asked for modifications to the staff conditions, all of which I believe are acceptable to staff. We have, we were concerned about the HVAC units having to be on top of the building. We understand we wanted to screen from view, so we've asked that they'll be screened from view, but we can put these residential units. These are not big, huge HVAC units that normally do go on rooftops. We prefer to have these on the ground, and we'll screen those from view of the adjacent properties. Important part was the, we've had this discussion about this road along the back from the very start, and we have agreed, even though, I don't, I'm not real sure where the acquisition of the right-of-way stands and how realistic this road is in the future, but we have agreed to provide 25 feet of right-of-way along the rear prompting line for a future public road. And we have conditioned that on the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So when we get certificate of occupancy, we will simultaneously give the right-of-way. And then we asked that 25 be amended, that we're bound by the elevation submitted and dated June the 4th. Approval of any changes to the elevations must be obtained by, in front of the Director of Community Development. In response to the fact that the car wash in our street has the same street address, I don't know. We pulled this off of the area GS maps, so I think it's just a clerical error. I assume they've got their own address, but we feel pretty certain that 2520 is our address. And then if you turn to the next page, you've got the conditions of the current property and the renderings which Rusty showed you. There's also one more rendering, which, in addition to the four elevations that you showed, this is the front corner that you'll actually see from Spring Road, and we think this will be a very attractive building. It will be certainly an addition, a welcome addition to your community. And the environmental impact, traffic, sightline runoff, drainage, et cetera, is going to be minimal, if any at all, compared to what we could do currently under the commercial zoning classification. So we would ask that you favorably approve it. I have representatives here of the applicant that would answer any questions you might have. If there is opposition, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve a little bit of time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Before you step down, anybody have any questions for the applicant? I'm sorry. Got to head to the floor.
I do have one quick question. Rusty noted that metal paneling would be excluded from the elevation. Do y'all have an idea of what that elevation, what will replace the metal panels as far as the material?
We do not. I think we can look at a mixture, and I'd call on Jason Lynn Scott to come up. There's probably any number of alternatives. It's all a question of price, but I would think we could do a mixture of stucco, stone, you know, whatever. They have done some of this elsewhere. Let me, I'm going to call on Jason to answer that question.
Sure. Hi, my name is Jason Lynn Scott with Stein Investment Group. None of the applicants, 2520 Spring Road, but that's our entity, Stein Investment Group. To answer your question real quick, we don't know exactly. Most likely, it would be a combination of masonry materials as a brick-water table, which is kind of consistent with... as a brick-water table, which is kind of consistent with what we're doing on the front, um, and probably some sort of ephesus or stucco material, um, you know, on the back and sides there. Yeah, I think you'll, I, hopefully you'll see that, you know, and, and just some quick background while I'm standing here. Um, we're a, uh, we're Atlanta-based retail, um, office and self-storage developers. Um, doing it a long time. Do a lot of, um, I think, um, retail projects that we're proud of all over the city. And I focus a lot of, in, in Midtown, West Midtown, and are continuing to do more there. Uh, we've done a lot of self-storage over the last, say, ten years. Um, we've done maybe twenty-five or so buildings like this, um, in Atlanta, up through the Carolinas and into, um, well, South Carolina, North Carolina, um, areas. And typically, we're, uh, we take sort of our retail approach into self-storage, um, meaning, uh, we like to create a sense of, uh, high-quality development that people are attracted to. Um, when we, when we, when we got into self-storage, ten years ago, we created our own brand, our own management company. Um, so we have, you know, maybe thirty-five people in that management company now, um, run our own facilities. And, you know, the, the intent of the development is to, is to do something that, that matches the neighborhoods we're in. And we like dense neighborhoods that are growing. We're in East Cobb, Roswell, Forsyth, Connet, um, Buckhead, Old Fourth Ward, um, Charleston, Raleigh. This comes in neighborhoods. Smurfs certainly fits into that, that list. Um, but, you know, and taking attention to detail and building a nice facility, you know, where, where you walk in the office and it feels like you're in a, you're in a hotel lobby or you're, you know, it, it feels great. Um, and it's, you know, and, and this product has changed over the years. Um, it's morphed out of industrial parks and guys with tank tops and cigars into a, you know, a service for a community and build a nice product.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. At this time, we'd like to, uh, open the floor for some public input. So, anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this zoning application, now is the time. Okay. Let the record ship.
Actually, I do have one. And I know that obviously you've put a great old time in.
Name and address.
Oh, Don, Don McQuathie, twenty twenty-five Oakley Trace. Yeah, Afton Downs, which is right around the corner. Um, and I don't have any, any objection to the storage and, and I do believe it's gonna be a very attractive facility. Um, I'm just wondering about the ground-level commercial, and it's a challenge in that lot to get any frontage. But what do you see? Well, sorry. I, I don't know what you would see there, given that it, at least the way it is, it's perpendicular to Spring Road. And I don't know that there's an alternative there. But it was just a question I'd like to throw out.
It's a fair question. All right. Yeah, come on. Is there anybody here that wants to speak in favor of or opposition to this zoning application? Anybody else? Okay. Yeah, why don't you come back up and just speak to the, the retail and just make sure you don't say anything, get you in trouble?
I don't, can't promise that.
You don't wanna say anything, it's gonna create opposition. How about that?
Uh, it's a very good question. It's, it's a, it's, it's a, you know, sort of a result of this, this particular layout. You know, the, the property itself is a, you can see it's sort of a flag lot, so it's a challenging piece of property. And it sits about ten, twelve feet below, uh, Spring Road as it falls back, uh, behind the racetrack and a big retaining wall that they, they built. So, it, it, it has challenging visibility. So, our initial plans actually were to try and get some retail more facing Spring Road. It's, it's just difficult. Um, it's difficult to make that happen. Um, this, this, this final plan where we ended up, um, really was an, uh, an evolution of something we did and some suggestions that came through staff of giving us some ideas for how we would potentially make the plan better. Um, and I think we've done that. The ground-level commercial really is the best place for visibility. Um, it's not a lot of space. It's only about, uh, exclusive of our retail office, it's only maybe thirty-three hundred square feet. And it's sort of shallow. We meant it, meant for it to have a lot of storefront, not so much depth. Um, I think the uses would be something like a destination office, you know, some kind of, you know, it can be dental. It can be, those types of uses are more service, quasi-retail, service-based, um, office-type businesses. Or insulated businesses to store. Sometimes we've have UPS store or other types of adjacent uses that work well.
Very cool. Thank you very much. All right. Before we take a motion on this, uh, there was, do you have any comments about the, the letter that they gave us? Okay.
I'll make it quick. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, um, recommendations that they've submitted to us, staff is okay with. Uh, staff assumes that in that type of, type, uh, type of development, the HVACs would have been on the roof. Obviously, they've clarified that, so we don't have any problems with that. They're also saying they're gonna screen it from public view. That's the main intent. It's not the location of the units. It's the screening of the units that, that the ordinance is after. The issue of the tying the twenty-five foot right of way, uh, to the, um, certificate of occupancy is perfectly acceptable to staff. Uh, we appreciate you working with us, um, 'cause that's a long-term plan that ultimately, um, I think will be beneficial, so staff is, is fine with that. And then twenty-five is just tying you to, you know, basically the elevation's been submitted with the understanding that the, um, the metal material will be replaced. And, and the stuff that was referenced, whether it was, you know, stucco or ephesus, uh, and some kind of masonry product, that, that's acceptable material to us. So, um, if, if there is an, a motion for approval, I would, I would just say that, um, that the three conditions that are stated here, because they've, they were kind enough to number them, that it was fourteen, twenty-three, and twenty-five, that the wording that they've submitted is acceptable to staff and you would just, we would substitute that for, for the previous staff wording in those three, three places.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chairman, one, one quick question with regard to the stipulation of the mechanical units not being visible from the right of way. Does that include the future right-of-way dedication? Do we, how do we wanna?
Turn this back on. What I would say is, um, there's enough distance between the rear of the building and where the proposed road would be. Uh, bec- not only is there a landscape strip with the road, but there's also detention area that, um, you know, I, I'm not asking them to screen stuff from a future, a future road.
Gotcha. Very good. All right. Any other questions? Okay. In the absence of any other questions, I'd like to, um, ask for a motion.
Um, right now, I'm making a motion to approve, uh, rezoning request Z eighteen dash zero zero nine. Rezoning from GC to OD conditional for the development of a hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five square foot climate-controlled self-storage building.
And a motion to approve, Mr. Bartlett. I've got a second. Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. We're waiting on one. Can you put it back on that screen for me, please? Okay, we have, uh, the, the application is approved six to one, Mr. By in opposition.
Just for the record, I'm assuming, Tom, that you, you accepted the, the substitution of the three conditions as part of your motion.
Yes.
Would you like that, would you like us to do that again?
Want me to redo that?
No, I'm, I'm, it's in the record now. That's all I wanted, is that your motion included the three, um, revised, Conditions. Conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much and good luck with you guys' project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Uh, the next item on our agenda is two zero one eight dash two five seven. This is zoning application Z one, zoning request Z one eight dash zero one zero. It's rezoning from R twenty to NS and NS to RM twelve conditional for the development of eighty-one townhomes at a density of nine point three eight units per acre. This is eight point six four acres and land lots six thirty-four and six sixty-three, seventeen fifty-five and eighteen thirty-seven Roswell Street. Quintus Development LP is the applicant. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Zoning request, um, to annex the property at seventeen fifty-five and eighteen thirty-seven Roswell Street. Uh, y'all will hear the request tonight, make a recommendation, uh, to Mayor and Council. They will hear it on July sixteenth and, and make a final decision at that point. Um, the subject property is located on the north side of Roswell Street, um, at pretty much the northeastern end of the street. Um, it has a current zoning designation of R twenty and neighborhood shopping in Cobb County. Uh, the applicant is proposing to change that zoning to RM twelve for the development of eighty-one single-family, or, single-family townhomes at a density of nine point three eight units per acre. Currently on site, there's one single-family home and the rest of the site is wooded. Um, and this will be located in, uh, Ward Two in the county. Uh, this has a future land use designation, a medium-density residential. With this request, the applicant is proposing to change that future land use designation to medium-high residential, which in the city is up to ten units per acre. We have notified the county of the request. We've sent them the information regarding, uh, the development and everything else associated with the city. The county has sent back a letter of non-objection to the city. Um, so they are not opposed to the, to the annexation and development of the site as proposed. Here's the proposed site plan for the development. As you can see, there'll be one accessway off of, uh, Roswell Street with a, with a deceleration lane, uh, provided at the entrance. The homes one through fifteen that will front on Roswell Street and will have re-entry garages off the public road, um, interior to the site. The rest of the, the homes within the site will all have front-entry, uh, driveways off of, um, the new public street within the development. With this request, they're proposing, um, the following setbacks, a front setback of fifteen feet, and that's along, uh, Roswell Street. Um, so we pull the homes up to the street. In addition, they'll have a side setback along the perimeter with, of twenty-five feet and a rear setback of twenty-five feet. With this request, they're proposing a landscape buffer of twenty, twenty feet along the adjoining single-family neighborhood. This is the location of the proposed detention facility. There is a small portion of stream buffer along the back, um, where they do plan to encroach into the impervious surface area on one lot. Um, but they also do plan to offset that encroachment with, uh, preserving additional buffer elsewhere on the, on the stream buffer. There's the deceleration lane. And I, I'll go back. In addition, there will also be sidewalks, five-foot sidewalks throughout the development and along, um, Roswell Street. With this request, there are several variances. Um, the first being a reduction of the front setback from fifty to fifteen feet. The second being a reduction of the side setback from thirty-five feet to twenty-five and a reduction of the rear setback from forty to twenty-five. The next request is to increase the impervious surface area from thirty-five percent to sixty-one and then reduce the building separation from thirty feet down to twenty. And redo, and the next one is a reduction of the minimum floor area from eighteen hundred square feet down to seventeen. And finally, is the encroachment into the stream buffer. With that being said, staff is supportive of all the variances except for the reduction in the minimum floor area. Um, that needs to stay at, uh, eighteen hundred square feet. Here's the proposed building elevations. These are the front-entry elevations and the, and the rear entry, or the rear elevations of those, uh, units. Here's the subject property. Here's the adjoining properties. You got the community center to the north, the militarist, uh, base to the, to the, uh, east. Um, got Avonlea Apartments to the, to the south and then, um, a church to the, to the west. Community Development recommends approval of the, uh, of the requested rezoning from neighborhood shopping in R twenty to RM twelve conditional, uh, with the following conditions from section twelve oh one of the zoning ordinance, uh, related to the composition of the home, the requirement for an HOA, open space requirements, stormwater management requirements, underground utilities, traffic improvements, uh, landscaping, streetlights, and deceleration lane. Uh, with the standard conditions, staff is also requesting some special conditions be applied to the property. Sixteen deals with the setbacks that we talked about earlier. Seventeen deals with the building separations. Uh, they had, need to have a minimum building separation of fifty feet from front to front, forty-five feet from rear to rear, and twenty feet from side to side. Also, eighteen deals with the number of units per building and that should be limited to six units. Nineteen, uh, requires a minimum floor area of eighteen hundred square feet, uh, per unit. Twenty-two requires a minimum driveway length, twenty-two feet. Twenty-one, each, requires each home to have a fire sprinkler system. Twenty-two, uh, requires each home to have, um, architectural features that delineate each unit on the rear of the townhomes. Uh, twenty-three is the requirement for the five-foot sidewalk within the development and along Spring Road. Uh, twenty-four is the provision for the twenty-foot landscape buffer along the single-family property line. Uh, twenty-five requires a developer to be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary. Twenty-six requires a developer to be, uh, responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the Fire Marshal. Uh, twenty-seven requires the, the stormwater management facility be located on HOA property. Twenty-eight requires, uh, street trees along Roswell Street. Twenty-nine requires all trees within the limits of disturbance to either be preserved during, uh, construction with tree fencing or be removed if they're, if they're not gonna be preserved. Uh, thirty deals with, uh, buffer averaging and offsetting the, the buffer encroachment. Thirty-one ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan submitted. Thirty-two ties the approval of the zoning to the elevations. And thirty-three are, is our list of additional stipulations by the applicant. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I believe, and I could have heard this wrong, but I believe you said the sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk along Spring?
Roswell.
Roswell Street.
Yes.
If I heard, if I heard Spring and you said Roswell.
Yeah, I could have, we got a, we got a request on Spring, so I very well could have said it.
Thank you, Rusty. All right. Uh, any questions for Mr. Martin? All right. At this time, we'd like to have, uh, the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Good evening and welcome, Mr. Sams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, members of the Planning Commission, for the record, my name's Garvis Sams and I represent, in connection with this application, Quintus Corporation. I have with me tonight, seated on the back row like Good Baptist, um, Mr. Jeff Carter of Quintus. And, uh, also, I have with me tonight, Mr. Brandon Wilt of Weekly Homes. Um, Weekly Homes is gonna be the builder. Quintus, of course, is the, uh, is the developer on this. So the three of us will be available at any time to respond to any questions, um, that you have. As always, i- it's, it's interesting, uh, either Ken or Rusty usually preempt some of the key points that, that I want to make, but, but they do so in a good fashion to kind of set you up and orient you as to what, what's going on. But what I'm not gonna do is reiterate what, what they said, uh, at least try not to, and just point out some key. and just point out some key issues that may be integral to this site and may be of interest to you. This is eight point six four acres, just short of nine. Northwest side of Roswell Street and directly across from Avonlea Apartments. Avonlea Apartments are built out and as built of fourteen point six seven units per acre. In fact, that's the clubhouse, which we used last week for a meeting with area residents and Williams Park representatives. Also across the street are Pine Village Apartments, which are significantly denser, at twenty-one point four one units per acre. And then the military facility that Rusty was referring to is the United States Marine Corps facility. I'm not sure exactly what they do, but it's, it's a rather large facility. Across the street also are self-service storage facilities, but I don't believe that the climate control kind, the miscellaneous commercial as you're going down Roswell Street. And we do have direct contiguity to a church and then Carrington Park is the single-family residential component, not component, development that's, of course, to our west at a density of four point seven four units per acre, which, for which we provided a buffer. This property is NS, it's Neighborhood Shopping, sort of a defunct classification in Cobb County. They evolved into NRC as a classification and it mirrors other jurisdictions. But it's also zoned R twenty, medium-density on the future land use map. This is in an area where your twenty forty comp plan recommends as a, as a key annexation area. In talking with the Community Development Director for Cobb County and also talking with their intergovernmental coordinator, they recognize this as a key annexation area. And even though they probably would have standing to, to have opposition to this under the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county, they do not. In fact, this is, this is what they've, they've projected. I've talked with the district commissioner in Cobb County who has no objection either. And I know that's probably going a little, a little outside the realm, but those conversations occurred after the county had already adopted a position of non-opposition to this application. But even though they did that, the county still weighs in with respect to water system comments and observation and also observations and comments from Cobb DOT. Mr. Martin didn't, didn't mention that, but to the extent that staff seeks to incorporate those into staff's recommendations, we're, we're fine with that. This is an annexation. This is a rezoning. It follows a parallel path. It does go to the, the mayor and council next. This is for eighty-one owner-occupied fee simple townhomes. They're single-family, but they are an attached product with, with townhome runs of no less than, than six units. Rusty mentioned this, but I wanted to tell you what the width is. Lots one through fifteen on the site plan are going to be forty-eight, excuse me, twenty-eight feet in width, which is pretty good size for a townhome. And then the, the ones, the balance of this, fifteen through eighty-one, will be twenty-four feet in width. The analysis and recommendations are not based upon our submission of June fifth, but they incorporate our June fifth stipulation letter, the revised site plan that was submitted at that time, and also the renderings and elevations. Because of the way the site plan has flipped with our units on the front being oriented to Roswell Street and, and at the city's suggestion, move more closely to Roswell Street, our architecture is going to change a little bit. And so what we'll be showing is, of course, the front and rear loaded product, the twenty-four and twenty-eight in width townhome. But that's a, an analysis and an architectural rendering that all clients are doing right now as we speak. So that'll be before the mayor and council, probably within a week. Also, within the next week to ten days, will be a, a traffic analysis, a trip generation, and a warrant need study in terms of signalization on Roswell Street. I don't know how many of you use Roswell Street, but it's a heck of a cut through if you want to bypass some traffic. And people are doing just that. And I heard the, heard the, heard the gentleman saying about Campbell that it was a raceway. I think it's pretty close to that on, on Roswell Street, trying to make a left into Avonlea on Thursday. Well, I had to be quick about it. So what we're looking at, along with Williams Park, is, is, is working with them. I believe they've initiated some discussions with the city and maybe with other entities regarding not only signalization, which we're looking at, but traffic calming devices. I don't think they're talking about speed tables or bumps in the road and that kind of thing, but, but other things that can slow traffic down. It, it's important from our marketability standpoint to be able to, to have that and be able to say that we've, that we've got that or, or working with Representative Williams Park in that respect. What you are or what you did see is the, the latest site plan for the project. With the letter of stipulations and conditions, Rusty stated that staff incorporated that into their comments and recommendations. I, I would like to say, in addition to the proximity of multifamily and military installations and commercial, some of the commercial not, not optimal for the, the city of Smyrna, we think with this, we provide an upper echelon mass to create more commercial at the right nodes and the right locations with this development. And of course, it's consistent with the densities that you've seen on Spring Road and other areas of the county that have gone from thirteen units per acre, or excuse me, eleven point five nine up to thirteen units per acre over the past three years, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen on ones that I've handled there. Staff has agreed to the, the variances requested because their hardship exists because of the irregular configuration of the property, our consolidation of one point of ingress and egress, which was staff fused or staff suggested. Also, the positioning of an old lake bed on the northwest corner of the property and the stream bank buffers that are there. We show a slight encroachment, but buffer averaging is allowed within your city plan review process and, and we compensate for whatever encroachment that we have. As far as the one variant the city doesn't support, we are, of course, not pushing that. We're agreeable to the eighteen hundred minimum, ranging from eighteen hundred up to twenty-four hundred in size and greater. Price points here for these townhomes, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, depending on the upgrades, which, which naturally you'll see, but price points will begin at three sixty-five. The architectural style and composition is mentioned in, in my stipulation letter. It's articulated in terms of the actual composition and it's shown by the photographs, excuse me, the renderings, which are going to be modified. But it also states that we'll follow the city's ordinance with respect to architectural style and the components of that architectural style. The driving, driveways will be twenty-two feet in, in length at a minimum. There'll be enough width to stack two more cars, so that's two in the driveway, two in the garage. And if you can see or did receive a review, rather, with the revised site plan, we've got strategically positioned guest parking that follows the Cobb County Fire Marshal's recommendation. It comports with, I think, what your fire marshal, Tim Gruball, was looking for at our last meeting with the, the city. Also, just FYI, we, all these units will be sprinkled, which is, is a requirement, but we also include the, the, the highest tech or the cutting-edge fire suppression systems for residential as well. I won't go through the usual conditions regarding HOAs and CCRs and the things that you hear from me, but they're in the stipulation letter as well as a third-party management company that'll handle the day-to-day affairs of the HOA to make sure it's properly insured, to do all these things, to take care of the amenities, to ensure that these stipulations are, are followed. Talking about HVAC and mechanical systems, they're all going to be screened from view. Entry signage is going to be in keeping with architectural style. And if you look at your, the handouts I've given you, the, the very first page of that handout, other than the title page, really gives you an idea of the context of development this is in. Rusty described it to you and I have, but we think it's entirely appropriate as a transition from twenty-one unit, military facility, twenty-one units per acre, R nine plus, less than ten units per acre, and then into the single-family and going back towards the commercial node where the commercial is. The last two exhibits in, in that handout show our tree preservation and replacement plans on the property, tree-sell homes. That's very key to us, but without a doubt, there, there will be grading to the extent that many of the trees come down. But as you can see, we've identified the specimen trees and articulated a, a preservation, excuse me, a, a replacement plan as well. We've reserved a part of the stipulations so that the Community Development Director, instead of having to come back to you and, and the mayor and council, has the ability to make minor modifications as long as staff's not increasing the density or lowering, reducing a buffer or changing the, the height of a structure. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, we, we do respectfully request that you follow your staff's recommendation and that you recommend the mayor and the city council approval of the application.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions for Mr. Sams?
I've got. Within the, I know you wanted to address the CCR and the HOA, but is there any provisions, David Weekly, the applicant, or anybody are putting in for the restriction of rentals and/or Airbnb rentals?
Absolutely. There, there's a limitation. These are all owner-occupied, for sale townhomes, except for a, a condition that allows for a ten percent rental opportunity that should be monitored by the HOA. The city has the ability to, to monitor that, but what we do is report on a yearly basis to the, we will report to the city on a yearly basis what, what the, the mix of the units will be. And I'll just tell you right now that my client will agree to no, no Airbnbs for this, for this site. I hope that answers.
Ms. Lightfoot.
Let's see if I can make this work. Hi, Mr. Sams.
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you.
All right. I have just a couple of questions. You did mention that you were going to incorporate a traffic study or you were involved with doing that. Could that be part of what we were, would approve tonight?
It's not for site. Engineering company is preparing that. They've given us a projected completion date of June fifteen. I think I've got that in. You, you can, well, I don't, I don't know how you make-
Kind of traffic calming. Some kind of consideration of traffic calming.
You can say that-
Is what we're looking at.
You can say that, that we will cooperate with the city with respect to the installation or the discussion or the implementation of any kind of traffic calming devices.
And the price point on this is three thirty-five to four hundred, that one?
Three sixty-five to four thirty-five. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all right now.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to have anyone that would like to speak in favor of or opposition to this zoning application. Please come forward now, state your name and address for the record. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Keith Bentley. I live on Gilbert Street in Williams Park. Really, I just want to reiterate one of the points. We, I was part of the meeting we had with a few of my neighbors last week with the applicant and their representatives. And by and large, we're fine with the development. Our big concern is traffic and we know a lot of people that live in these townhouses are going to go right through our neighborhood. The city is in process of building a roundabout there at Matthews, Hawthorne, and Roswell, which is supposed to slow traffic, be a, a traffic calming device itself, and we hope that works. But this, this project is just to the north and east of that, that roundabout. So slowing traffic down that's coming off Windy Hill, that's doing the cut-through is very important to us throughout, through the length of Roswell Street. And we are involved in other projects with the city to work on traffic calm within our neighborhood. So I don't know how we do this within this approval process. Obviously, that we brought that up last week. The applicant seems amenable, as they've said, to looking at that. It takes a little while, of course, to figure out what that actually is. But I would just urge that somehow we figure out how to end up with some sort of stipulation that we're going to do something related to traffic calming before this goes to mayor and council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bentley. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Sudewith, you want to address the traffic calming?
Yeah, and I'm actually going to ask Eric to come back up for that because we did talk about that. And I'd feel more comfortable with his words from a traffic engineer than mine as a planner.
Oh, come on. Good to see you all again. In this case, we're talking about traffic calming for this project. Traffic calming is not a one-size-fits-all. And looking at the geometry of what's going on there, you've got a number of driveways that are directly across the street from here from the Avonlea project, from an existing apartment complex. There's also certainly a public safety aspect where, especially for fire access and emergency response, we need to be cognizant. As well, we have recently adopted a traffic calming policy, not so much to make that a bureaucratic stipulation, but that looks at some of the constraints and what's appropriate where. I would venture if there were something that were a stipulation to the effect of, sorry, I'm supposed to be addressing you all and you're included in the conversation, Garvis, obviously. If it was a stipulation were to the effect of a traffic calming solution will be evaluated by staff at the time of land development permitting that is consistent with our traffic calming policy and public safety input. Sorry. And I probably can't repeat exactly what I just said.
It's not near as eloquent as what Mr. Sams said, but we'll-
It's not.
We can't let him write it, though.
City employee attorney, all I'm saying. How can I clarify that?
I have traffic calming solution evaluated by staff before the city council meeting.
Yes, and I would, I would throw another phrase in there, consistent with the traffic calming policy as a stipulation to be incorporated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Randall.
Can I answer any other questions?
That'll be it.
Any other questions for Mr. Randall? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. In the absence of further discussion, I'd like to request a motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead. A motion. Motion to approve zoning request Z eighteen dash zero one zero rezoning from R twenty and NS to RM dash twelve conditional for the development of eighty-one townhomes at a density of nine point three eight units per acre, eight point six four acres, land lots six thirty-four and six thirty, six sixty-three dash seventeen fifty-five and eighteen thirty-seven Roswell Street with the stipulation of traffic calming solution evaluated by staff before the city council meeting consistent with traffic calming policy that we already have.
Hold on, we have a-
For approval.
For approval, Ms. Lightfoot. We have a second, Mr. By. Please vote. Application is approved, seven zero. All right. The next item on the agenda is two dash zero, two zero one eight dash one six three. This is zoning request Z one eight dash zero zero seven rezoning from R fifteen to RAD conditional for the single-family homes at a, for two single-family homes at a density of five point two. Here's the landlots, landlot five fifty-nine. This is fourteen seventy-eight Spring Street. PM Builders LLC is the applicant. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
All right. Good evening. This request is gonna, this is just a standard rezoning request. It's going to travel the same path as previous requests. Y'all will hear it, make a recommendation tonight, and then mayor and council will make final decision July sixteenth. The subject property is located at fourteen seventy-eight Spring Street. It has a zoning classification right now of R fifteen. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the currently vacant site into two lots and build two new single-family homes. The future land use for this property is mixed use. There's no land use change required for this rezoning. If you look at the future land use map, the properties to the north and east have a moderate density residential, future land use- and east have a moderate density residential, future land use classification. The properties to the south and west have a mixed use, future land use designation. This is the proposed site plan. The applicant is requesting the following minimum, the following setbacks for the property of front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of 10, and a rear of 5. With this request, they are also proposing a five-foot right-of-way dedication along Foster Street. And with this request, there are five variances associated with it. The first is to reduce the lot size from 15,000 square feet down to 6,800 square feet, reduce the lot width from 100 feet down to 70, and reduce the front setback from 35 feet to 20, and the side from 10 to 5, and the rear from 30 to 5. As you can see, staff is supportive of the first three requests. We are not supportive of the rear and side setback reduction. Just give you an idea of what the applicant is proposing as far as building elevations. Picture of the subject's height. And then the adjoining properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the property from R-15 RAD conditional for the following, with the following conditions. From standard conditions from Section 1201, dealing with home composition, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, tree ordinance requirements, and bearing debris on site. Number 11 deals with the minimum setbacks for the property, which are a front setback of 20, a side setback of 10, which is different from what the applicant is requesting, and a rear of 20, which is also different from what the applicant is requesting. 12 is the minimum lot size of 6,800 square feet. 13 requires a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet. 14 requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. 15 is the five-foot dedication along Foster Street. 16 is the requirement for a five-foot sidewalk along Foster. 17 is the requirement for any water and sanitary sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 18 deals with the replacement and upgrading of a drainage pipe that runs from Spring Street to the, along the shared property line to the, to the east. Number 19 is the developer should provide new curb and gutter along Foster Street. 20, the developer shall fix the radius, the curb radius at the intersection of Spring Street and Foster Street at the discretion of the Public Works Director. 21, any trees that are within the limits of disturbance have to either be preserved with tree fencing or be removed during the development process. 22, the, the lot along Spring Street shall have the front of the home along Spring Street. 23 ties the zoning to the, to the site plan submitted. And 24 ties the zoning to the elevation submitted. That, I'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. By?
Yeah, I have more of a comment rather than a question. You're certainly free to respond to it. But in the, in the staff memo, zoning review factor number one, your, the staff's assessment of that is that the proposed use is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. Under zoning review factor six in the staff memo, the staff states that the proposed development is consistent with the most recent trends in this portion of the city. Yet, when you look at the table of recent infill developments in the Williams Park area, our own staff memo shows the average density of recent infill developments, I think there's about, it's in there, of 3.8. If you take all the densities that are listed there and average them out, it's a 3.8 density. The proposed development is a 5.2 density, which by my math is about a 37% higher density, which, you know, in my judgment is, is not consistent, and it's not suitable for the adjacent properties. Then in zoning review factor number five, it states that the .38 acre rezoning will be consistent with the city's future land use plan, which indicates a future land use of mixed use. Mixed use has historically allowed higher densities throughout the city. Therefore, the proposed density of 5.2 units per acre should be appropriate under the mixed use designation. It seems to me that factor five almost acknowledges that this development is not suitable, and it's not consistent with the development. And it goes on to argue that either it's, so my point would be that it's either consistent with the current development or it's justified with a higher density because of the future land use designation. But it can't be both. We can't answer it's suitable in one and six and say it's justifiable in five.
The question is whether, the question is whether or not a single family home is suitable next to another single family home is the question. And whether or not there's 10,000 square feet around that home or 6, 6,800 square feet around that home, that's, that's the issue that you're having an issue with. What I'm contemplating is whether or not a single family home is allowed to be next to another single family home. And with respect to that, then yes, it is suitable. Has the area developed into smaller lot sizes? Yes, it has. And when you compare the densities of these other developments that may have stormwater management facilities on separate lots and, and park areas on separate lots, all that land area gets calculated into the overall densities for those developments. So if you went on a lot-per-lot basis, they may be 5.2 units per acre. But when you add those additional property into that calculation, it lowers the density. So that's where the discrepancy comes in between this stuff.
It's really impossible for us to, to understand that based on the information that we're.
But with respect to the mixed use designation, the city's future, the city's mixed use zoning designation contemplates a minimum lot size for single family home is 6,200 square feet. And this is, the smallest lot here is 6,800 square feet. So that's where that assessment that it meets the future land use and is in compliance with that comes into that, that factor.
No, I understand the argument. Thank you for answering. My concern.
One more question. This was one lot, so the whole lot was subject to the side setback on a corner lot. Is that correct?
You say that again. I'm sorry. I missed that.
This is a corner lot with one lot?
Yes.
So the side setback on Foster Street was, will be subject to the entire one lot. Is that correct?
They're establishing the side setback as 20 feet, which will be 20 feet on Spring Street and 20 feet on Foster. Which, if you look down the rest of Foster, the existing homes down there are probably close to being 20 feet. I don't know exactly what they're at, but they're not 35 feet from the property.
One home will have 35 feet off of Spring, and the other one will have 20 feet off of Foster. Is that correct?
No, the adjoining properties to the, to the east, I'd have to look. I think I put it in the memo. I think they're between 15 and 25 feet range off of Spring Street.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, Rusty. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward, applicant, my tongue got stuck. Come forward and speak in favor. It's late. Mr. Thompson, good evening and welcome.
Just be glad I'm not asking for multifamily.
Yeah, the microphone's off.
Off? Is it on now? Okay. Two years ago, the city, probably two and a half years ago, the city decided to have vision meetings and try to determine what's the future of Smyrna. Where are we heading as a city? I say we. I don't live here. They know that. But I've been very active in Smyrna for 20, 25 years. And so the city engaged a consultant and started holding citizen input vision meetings. Those meetings went on for about two years. I attended six or seven of them myself, and they were well attended. And what came out of those meetings was, yeah, Smyrna, you may not like it, but Smyrna is evolving. It is growing and it is changing. Now, that, you may or may not like that, but the truth is, is that they spent a considerable amount of time and effort with citizen input as to what should Smyrna be 10, 15, 20 years from now. Well, one of the things that came out of that meeting was the core areas of Smyrna and kind of anything around Market Village within, say, half a mile or so is probably considered a core area, needs heavier density. And so what came out of that was, excuse me, what came out of that was this mixed use, land use designation. So yes, this, this area used to be moderate density residential. And after two years of meetings and consulting, they decided, and I don't, I'm not just saying the citizens, the city decided to adopt this area as a future land use. I mean, as a mixed use area of the future land use plan. So that kind of changes things. And Rusty's already, already discussed it. That 4.5, that has always been kind of the rule for moderate density, hasn't gone away. It's just that this isn't moderate density land use anymore. It's mixed use. Now, I am on the edge of the mixed use, which is, I think to go from 4.5 to 5.2 is very reasonable. Now, if I was down by the railroad tracks, I'd be telling you, I'd be singing a whole different song. I'd be saying, we need to do about eight units to the acre, because you've got the railroad tracks you have to deal with. And that in and of itself makes it a little more difficult to sell residential real estate. Mixed use allows for all kinds of uses. I mean, it's, I've just got a list here just of some of them, but it's, you know, schools, daycare, nursing homes, retail establishments, banks, clinics, medical dental offices, hotels, motels, laundries, beauty shops, coffee shops, restaurants. That's just a few of them. Now, most of those don't make sense in this location. But two single family homes, I think, does. It's a very reasonable request for this. I understand that the opposition does not want to see anything exceed 4.5. But again, this is mixed use, and this is on the edge of that mixed use. And to go to 5.2 is not an unreasonable. It's not setting a precedent, because this is not moderate density residential land use. This is mixed use. If anything, it might be setting a precedent for lower densities within a mixed use land use area. So I did agree, by the way, it was not mentioned in Rusty's comments, I did agree to a 2,500 square foot minimum. So if that's still a concern, that's still something that I'm willing to do. But given, given the character of the Williams Park neighborhood, it's not like I'm going in there trying to build trailer parks. If you've been down Foster Street in the last two, three, four, five years, it's in, it's in serious need of a facelift. And all this does is give me kind of a foothold. Yeah, I do own the corner, and I own two more houses, one of which has been torn down. And I'd love to own the whole street, but I don't own it right now. I'm trying to buy additional properties. I'd love to get that whole street cleaned up. But it, it, if you haven't been down there, it needs a facelift. That's what I'm trying to do. And, and all I'm trying to do is, is build, most of the product I've built in Smyrna has not been an eyesore to anybody. And so the last time I was this popular with, with opposition was when we zoned Matthew Street back in '06. And now we have five new couples living on, on Matthew Street and more to come when we get the corner developed. But all I ask is that you've got professional staff, you pay them, maybe not well enough, but you pay them well, and they have recommended approval. And I respectfully request that you recommend approval also. And I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. By?
First of all, Mr. Thompson, thank you for, again, you and I have met and talked numerous times, and I appreciate your flexibility and willing to, willingness to try to come up with something that would be workable for the community. You indicated, but it's not reflected in the, in the, in the memo, that you'd be open to putting a stipulation with this request of a minimum square footage of 2,500 square feet. So, you know, if we can somehow get that in before the city council, I would appreciate that. Right now, it currently reflects 1,800 square feet. And it's also my understanding, you and I've talked, that you own the property adjacent to the, the one in the application here. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I think I know the answer to the question, but I just want to make sure I have it for the record. You are not agreeable to building two properties on those two lots.
Let's make sure I know which two we're talking about.
Well, you're, you're taking the one that's in this proposal and divide, you're proposing to divide it up in two. My question is, you would take that one lot and the one that you own that's not part of this proposal and put two houses on that as opposed to three?
That is correct.
You, you are opposed to that under any circumstances?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I have no other questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you, sir. Stay close. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to have anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. We've got several. Thank you. Good evening and welcome, Mr. Ward.
Leonard Ward. I live at 1496 Spring Street. I'm two doors down, basically. And we're in opposition to this because it's bad policy. Now, the only reason that there's two lots here out of one lot is to make, is to make a higher profit. Now, I'm not opposed to profit. I work for a living myself. But this is going to set the idea of whether or not it's mixed use, this is a single family use, and it should be one lot for one house, at least right here. Because 6,200 square feet is below what RAD conditional asks for in the zoning table as a land use. Only get 7,200 with a tax single family, like you just saw over on Roswell Street. Now, that's a problem for us, because guarantee you that the next time there's somebody trying to force a higher density, we're going to see this one on that density map that Mr. By talked about. And what we'd like to see on that density map is something that holds the line and defends Williams Park. Whether or not the mixed use line is in the right place and was drawn badly, who's to say? We'll certainly have something to say about that in the future. However, what we see here is something that doesn't really make any sense, because these houses, or there's no reason to have another house here when you have a house on the corner facing, that could face Spring Street, and another house that could face Foster Street. The next door lot could face Foster Street, the one that was torn down. This lot, there's no reason to have another lot here, because 15, this is a 15,000 square foot lot. It's R-15 to begin with, and that's what we need to see here. The comp plan doesn't tell us that mixed use requires any particular density, but the zoning, which is what controls the property, does control by lot size. Now, if there, if it's going to be, we're going to just, doesn't matter, we can RAD condition whatever we want, that's one thing. But conditional zoning under Georgia law has always been for the protection of neighbors, not to allow developers to do whatever it is that they want. I think for this particular lot, the right thing to do is, if there's another, if Mr. By was asking about whether or not there's something else that could be done here, that's something. But your own zoning ordinance says these things shouldn't be reduced from Section 506 unless unusual circumstances make these limitations impractical. There's no unusual circumstance here. This is a nice, flat, square lot. Right across the street, single lots are selling, are being developed at a $700,000 price point. There's certainly lots of room here to make money, and there's no reason to oppress the neighborhood with this and put us on another chart where we're going to be. This is smaller than anything that we would see in the neighborhood as a new lot, and that's the problem. This is a new lot, why create a new lot when you don't have to? Two-for-one, why? That's what you're going to see all the time. Thank you so much, that ends my comments, but you have them in my letter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, I'm Casey Claven, I live on Roswell Street in Smyrna. I'm going to provide input on a few of the zoning review factors, and in order to keep it brief, I'm going to read rather than speak from memory, but I am going to need more than three minutes.
Just do your best.
You all have a blue folder in front of you with a graphics package. I'm going to start with a little background, and, and then I'm going to go into the zoning factors, not in numerical order. Williams Park is Smyrna's oldest residential neighborhood. It was a good place to live in the early 1900s, but as Smyrna expanded westward in the 1960s, it became the wrong side of the tracks, and some of the properties transitioned to commercial uses. By the 1990s, its residential appeal was rebounding, and in the early 2000s, it became a desirable place to live. With that, commercial use declined. The blue areas on the first page represent previously commercial properties which have been rezoned for residential use. The orange areas represent existing commercial uses in a variety of types. Analysis of zoning review factor five has a bearing on the other review factor, so I'll start with that one. Please refer to page two. Factor number five asks, is the zoning proposal in conformity with the land use plan? The answer here is complicated. In the city's document package for this application, there are two places where the subject property is depicted on the land use map. First, on page one of the Community Development Department's memorandum, the subject property is clearly shown within residential land uses which are colored yellow and green. Later, on Exhibit B, the subject property is shown within a purple mixed-use area, right at the boundary with the overall areas prevailing moderate-density residential use. Apparently, this discrepancy is due to the use of the old land use map on the memorandum's first page, and the new land use map for Exhibit B. It has just recently, in relationship with the zoning application, come to the notice of the Williams Park residents that the previously smaller mixed-used area in the southwest part of the neighborhood grew in size with the adoption of the city's new land use map. We believe this change represents either an error in drafting the new map, or an ill-conceived decision. Commercial land use in Williams Park has been declining, not expanding, in recent years. While previously, commercial properties have been rezoned for residential use, no commercial, no resident, no, excuse me, no property has been rezoned from residential to commercial use of any type. This very application is evidence of the prevailing residential use in the area. The applicant wishes to build only houses, not a mixed-use development. A group of Williams Park residents will be addressing this expanded mixed-use section with the city's staff in the weeks to come, hoping to move the boundary back to where it used to be. In light of that, we ask, that, that we wish to point out that this property, though it may technically lie in a mixed-used area, is more accurately viewed as being part of the moderate-density residential environment by which it's surrounded. Moving on to page three, factor one, does the proposed use, does the proposal permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of the adjacent and nearby properties? The answer here is clearly no, because the property, the proposed density is 5.2 houses per acre, and significantly denser than the residential uses in the surrounding area. Overall residential development in Williams Park area, A, shown in yellow on your graphic, is 3.5 units to the acre. The city's target for new residential development here is moderate-density, from 3 to 4.5 units per acre. The green area marked B between Foster and Elizabeth Street, which includes the subject property, is currently at 4.5 units per the acre. The pink area marked C was recently redeveloped right across Spring Street from the subject property at 3.9 units to the acre. The light blue development marked D east of Elizabeth Street is built at 2.8 units per acre, and the blue area marked E across Foster Street from the subject property is a 10-acre tract occupied by a Baptist church and its parsonage. Moving on to page four, factor number two asks, will the proposed use adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties? The answer is yes, it will adversely affect the nearby property. The Baptist church across Foster Street from the subject property is currently zoned R15, and has been included in Williams Park's moderate-density until the recently redrawn land use map changed it to mixed-use. Mixed-use is not likely to happen there, because commercial uses are declining in the neighborhood while residential development is very active. The Baptist church has a diminishing congregation, and several area builders are keen to acquire its 10 acres as, for residential construction. This applicant is one of them, he said to me personally that he'd like to buy it and build the same narrow houses here that he built on small lots on Matthew Street. If this application is approved, it will later be used as a precedent for redeveloping the church property at a density greater than city staff has set as the appropriate density for the residential development in Williams Park. Factor number three asks, does the subject property have a reasonable economic use as currently zoned? And the answer here is an emphatic yes. The current zoning as R15 allows the construction of one house. And since the applicant acquired the property fraction of its actual value, he can build one house here and make a very good profit on his project. Remember, just because a lot is larger than it needs to be to build one house, does not automatically mean that it's large enough to build two. At 16,756 square feet, this is not an onerously large lot, there are many lots in Williams Park which are as large or larger.
Ms. Claven, I need you to wrap it up.
I'm working on it. On page five, factor six asks, are there existing or changing conditions which support either approval or disapproval of the zoning proposal? The answer is yes, there are conditions which support disapproval. As discussed under zoning factor number two, several area builders want to acquire the first Baptist church. Moving on to factor seven, will the proposed development conform to, be a deterrent to, or enhance the architectural standards, open space requirements, and aesthetics of the general neighborhood, considering the current historical and planned uses in the area? The proposed development would have a detrimental effect on the aesthetics and open spaces of the neighborhood, both in terms of its current trends and its historical past. Smyrna's oldest residential neighborhood, Williams Park, is historically based on lots of half an acre or greater. Recognizing changing development trends, neighborhood residents worked with the city a few years ago to develop a new plan. The aim was to allow for new development within the limits, and to, in order to preserve the texture and nature of the, I am very near the end.
We've got it, we got, we understand it.
Allowing for a density of up to 4.5 houses per acre.
Ma'am, ma'am, with all due respect.
May I have somebody else's three minutes?
I gave you, well, let them come up and give it to you. You've already had three, you already had four minutes over the time, so you've had seven minutes already.
I apologize. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I ask respectfully that you deny this application.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Guys, I'm trying to be as fair as possible, I gave her twice as much time as I gave anybody else, and almost the full amount of time that the developer has, okay? I'm trying to be fair. So I apologize, Ms. Claven, I appreciate your hard work and your information, and I will gladly review every bit of it when I go home tonight, I really appreciate it. All right, Mr. Davis?
I only have 15 minutes.
I'm pretty sure you'll get as long as you need, sir.
I'd just like to make a point that hadn't been made, Casey, Casey alluded to it, but when we started trying to develop, redevelop our neighborhood, we had to do something that, with density, that would attract developers in there, so they could make money, but to try to protect the character of our neighborhood.
We state your name for the record, sir, please.
Ron Davis, 1351 Roswell Street, sorry.
Thank you very much.
So, we worked with the city for a year or so, and we wanted four units per acre max, and we settled for four and a half, we thought that was fair. Now, when you take that four and a half, that equates to a minimum lot size of 9,650 square feet. So here, we've got a proposal that exceeds 4.5, that the city gave us and approved, and said, that's what we're going to approve over there, a max of four and a half, we're at 5.2, and I forgot the new lot size, 6,000 something square feet. And the city said, we're going to protect Williams Park at 9,650 minimum square feet. So what are we even doing here? Brad, I would appreciate it if you would reconsider and take that second lot and build two nice homes on those three lots, if you want to look at it that way, and make the same amount of money as you can make by building two on this one lot. It's going to have to be a smaller house, going to generate less money, less profit, and do the right thing by Williams Park, and make yourself some money while you do it. But the point I wanted to make is, 4.5 and the 9,650 are being exceeded, and the city said that was the standard for over there, and we're violating it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody else like to come forward? Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much for all your comments. Mr. By would like to make a couple other comments at this time.
Yeah, just for the record, I want to make sure everybody is aware that I received three phone calls from neighbors in the Williams Park area that were in support of the project. None of them were able to show up at tonight's hearing, but I wanted to make sure during this public comment session that we acknowledge that there are folks in the neighborhood who are supportive as well.
Thank you, Mr. By. Any other comments from the board? In fairness, Mr. Thompson, if you'd like to come back, the way I have it here, we had approximately 13 minutes of citizen input, and you took about seven minutes earlier.
Okay, I pushed something. Anyway, you'd think I was trying to put up trailer, a trailer park, but again, I, these folks, they have good hearts, and they, they stand by, I mean, I know their beliefs are strong, and, and I respect that. This isn't going to hurt Williams Park, there's no way one extra house is going to hurt Williams Park. What we have, and this is one of my arguments, I've not, I've not used it up to now, but, you know, we have an affordability crisis in terms of housing in this, in this market, and it's not just here, it's across the entire country. And we've talked about it a little bit. Williams Park's becoming a 600, 700,000 dollar place to live, and there's nothing wrong with that, but that excludes an entire segment of the home-buying population known as millennials, because most of them can't afford that. So, when you look at affordability, I mean, what I try to do is, the, the house on Spring Street would probably be a 600,000 dollar house, because it, it would need to be, but going down Foster Street, I don't feel comfortable building a 600,000 dollar house or a 500,000 dollar house on Foster Street, because it's just, I mean, again, if you've seen Foster Street, it's, it's in great decline, and it needs improvement. So, if for nothing else, I think a little diversity in terms of product and people is not a bad thing for this, for this city. I mean, we need young people in this city as much as we do with the next move-up and the next, you know, the folks that are making 200,000 dollars a year that can afford a 600,000 dollar house. We need people in here, in here that are making 100 to 150,000 dollars a year, and can afford a 450,000 dollar house. We need that in this city. And they're the folks that are going to be going, walking to the restaurants, walking to the bars, using the retail sites, they're the ones out there spending the money, those are the kind of folks we need here in Smyrna, and that's really what this is about. And that's all I'll say at this point, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion. We have, I'm asleep, sorry. Yeah, we have a motion for Mr. By.
Yeah, I would like to move that we deny zoning request Z18007, rezoning from R15 to Rad conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 5.2 units per acre, .38 acres, land lot 559, 1478 Spring Street, Southeast.
We have a motion to deny, Mr. By, we have a second, Mr. Bartlet, please vote. The motion to deny passes 6-1 with Ms. Harrington in opposition. Mr. Thompson, you do a fine job in the city, and good luck to you on this little strip. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of a code amendment to Section 602 of the zoning ordinance and the adoption of the city's updated zoning map. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
I don't have a display for you or anything, I gave you a rezoning packet. Basically, this request is taking all the zoning requests that the mayor and councils have acted on since 2013, and it was approved, and made them, reflected those rezonings and annexations and stuff on an official map with a new date that reflects the map as it currently stands today. With this request, there's a code amendment for Section 602 of the zoning ordinance, which simply updates the date of the zoning map to, to the 18th, which will be next Monday if it gets adopted. With that, that's all I got.
All right, any questions for Mr. Martin? Can I get a, can I get a motion to approve the zoning, a motion to approve, Mr. Campo, second, Ms. Harrington? Oh, Lord, did we all vote? Motion's approv, the new map's approved, 7-0. Dear Lord. All right, any, any further discussion, Mr. Sudrith? I think we've heard it all tonight, well done, ladies and gentlemen. The last item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the, from the May, what day? Sorry, May 14th, Jesus. May 14th, planning and zoning meeting, I need a, I got a motion to approve, Mr. Rice, and a second, Mr. Bartlet. All in favor of the minutes as, as presented, please vote. Minutes are approved, 7-0. Any further business? No further business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:30, 9, 9, 9, 9:14 PM.
Hey, I've been up since 4:30, what's your excuse?
Yeah, right, you know, I don't know, just, I guess I'm a weakling anymore.